Yeah, we should go ahead and stand for prayer and pledge. Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together today for county business. I pray that you will guide us to make good decisions, to be visibly responsible, and that you give us the questions to ask that need to be asked while we're receptive to the information that is given and that we communicate well amongst each other. In your name we pray, amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we will hand it over to the county manager for our opening remarks.
I just want to say thanks for letting us have this opportunity as we roll into the budget cycle. When I joined Gates back in February two years ago, it was rocking and rolling the whole time, and there really wasn't a lot of time for dialogue and sharing. And I just think this will hopefully make for better understanding and hopefully better decisions. And I think that much of y'all know, we're losing a member in five weeks. Really, Anna Trigg has decided to pull the plug on that retirement gig. And she really guided me through the Gates County way of proceeding with the budget when I joined the team. I will miss her corporate and institutional memory and would ask her to just come up with a fee schedule as to how much per phone call would have been had I pulled back.
That's the county file I'm going to answer that.
But really and truly, having an opportunity to meet with the department heads and agency directors inform and use everybody a chance to ask questions, to learn about their priorities, their challenges, and issues that they really think they need to elevate for the government bodies' attention. We put out a notice that we might have to have a contract amendment for the audit. That is not necessary. Leanne Bagasala, who was at our meeting last month, we did speak, she was able to get final review by her board of directors March 31st, so we didn't have to go for an April extension. And what that allows from her side is now she can submit our audit to the government commission, so they will have it, and hopefully by the 16th, she'll be able to tell you as a board whether or not the LGC has received it without comment or has any initial information they'd like to share. So with that, we're ready to roll. And Lisa's got a lot on her platter, so.
How good was it? Well, for the, I'm a little stuffy, so please excuse me. I've tried to talk about it pretty recorder. For the fiscal year 2526, department proposed budget today for your hearing. We're going to start with the planning, zoning, and economic development portion of this. The department, we'll start with just an explanation of where our department is. The department is comprised of the planning and zoning department, GIS, coenforcement, and development services coordinator. We employ four employees, three full-time positions, and one part-time. And that includes, again, the planning, zoning, and economic development manager, GIS coordinator, the administrative services, development services coordinator, and the part-time coenforcement position. The planning, zoning, and economic development coordinator oversees, of course, zoning enforcement, economic development, which oversees the economic development of the county and is responsible for administration of the county's land usage and ordinances, which is comprised of federal and state guidelines. The county's board of adjustment and planning board, supervision of GIS operations, administrative and development services, coenforcement, building inspections, technical review committee. The GIS manager is responsible for all updates forwarding them to the state and the site, which you see on the web, and for updating and assigning addresses in the county for E911 and assisting the planning and zoning manager with operations. The development services officer is responsible for all intake of permits and forwarding those as well as complaints to the appropriate employee within the department as well as scheduling inspections. The coenforcement officer is responsible for making inquiries or investigations into all formal complaints that are received by this department and to gain voluntary compliance to correct any valid violations of the ordinances and occasionally issue fines, but we really strive for compliance in this county. There are no capital outlay requests in this budget proposal for this year, this fiscal year. And this budget is comprised of salaries and general operating expenses and office supplies. We do request, and I really hate to do this early, but we've got a great team. I really like to request a 5% salary increase across the board for our employees unless the cost of living increases adoptively by county commissioners this fiscal year to keep up with the existing inflation. So basically, we have no huge expenses. We plan to operate pretty much within our budgetary year this year. We have no huge expenses for this department except for operating expenses, just like this year.
Oh, we'll ask with we can do have especially two commissioners that aren't here. Is there any way that you could email us that information so that they can have it from you as far as your now thinking?
Absolutely. So next, is building inspections for fiscal year 2526.
Can I just say, on here, the summary says planning slash ED slash inspections.
Inspections has to be kept separate by statute. Whatever you take in, it's because of 160D, and that's required.
160D, statute, 160D, okay.
So you have to keep that separate, just because State of North Carolina requires that. So now, now I'll look forward to this building inspections. This department is comprised of the inspections department and employs one full-time employee. The building inspector is responsible for reviewing the plans submitted by private citizens and contractors to ensure they meet the national and state building codes, the issuance of building permits and inspections of the permitted construction in different phases of buildings. There's no capital outlay request in this budget proposal, and this budget is comprised of salaries and general operating expenses and office supplies, just like the other. There's a substantial savings in this department this year, this proposed budget, as we have maintenance contracts and software for both departments. That we have, we have software that, you know, we use in our departments, you know, typically, and we have those expenses always. And again, we ask for that 5% as well for our department unless there's a code to keep on inflation. We have no huge expenses again that would ride this year, and not we know that.
Well, I'd like to add back to the question about the economic development piece, the ED. I believe that change happened in '23 with the budget for '23, '24, when the board agreed to add economic development responsibilities to Lisa's plate, so that position was reclassified to reflect having both planning and zoning function plus economic development. And we have economic development meetings around the region with the peer group of professional developers. She does attend that. And last year, she was also honored with the opportunity to participate in what's called North Carolina, Leadership North Carolina, which I think has really broadened her list of contacts and resources to better serve all of us here in Gates County. And I'll say too, there's no hint of the things they get pulled into. We all remember there was a situation on Medical Center Road where the gentleman's living with no power, no water, and I think he's still there, but for a while, there'd been a lot of calls from the sheriff about complaints in that part of the county. And I know Frank Cook, if that is correctly, the part-time inspector, he helped look at that. We had input from Mr. Mitchell with buildings, but there was just no telling of the things that might pop up in any given. They've always been very responsive and.
We're very lucky. We have a great department. I don't think we'll hear too much about complaints or anything like that. We're a good team.
And I'd speak, we've done some work with trying to integrate the inspection software between, and jumping into buildings thing a little bit, so that they can cross-reference properties between the building inspection and the fire marshal and the fire inspection component. So that's been really a great thing to watch and see it develop.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. There are also, there are also part of our damage, a large part of our damage assessment team posed a natural disaster too. And takes a big part in our wildlife interface plan that we're going to update within the next 12 months, because it was the last updated since 2011. So we just got that information from Forest Street.
Just finished down our original hazard mitigation plan.
So planning does involve a lot of mitigation plans, and some of that's going to set what we're available for grant funding, identifying those vulnerabilities. And then we also interact as the technical review, plans review, and inspection schedule and in these troubled areas like cedent properties and some of that stuff. Because if you don't get them cleared out, they kind of, things just kind of roll downhill. And we are all on the same radio system there.
Yes, we are. Thank you for those updates.
So if we do have a damage, like a natural disaster, or outlandish assessment, they're directly communicating, the ability to directly communicate where and how long and who's answering, responders and stuff like that.
So, either of you have any questions on the thing?
Yes, sir. I know you said part of the operational cost will be the software. Would it be additional software or the software that you have, you have licenses or any other?
At the start, we've been, fortunately, we've been able to work with someone that has helped update and integrated some of the planning functions into that as well. And we've really been working diligently with them the past three months, where they are actually rewriting some of the software to adapt to what we need and actually some new statutes and codes that we're going to be integrating here in July as well. So we've been fortunate on that. We thought we may have to change, but it really works fine with us. And actually, we're working on a new page that's more user-friendly for the citizens as well.
So I agree with Absor that there's no additional costs.
Yes, yes.
Anything else? Nothing further?
And we could have indeed purchased an answer prior to Patrice?
I would, I would say because it has been advertised, that we probably need to stick to what was, what was presented. Just in case somebody had a specific interest in one area and was planning to come for that. I think that that would be most appropriate, I think.
Why haven't you started filling in a little bit of the gap?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll get it, Mr. Johnson.
When you shoot your heart count with the audit, it's almost the size of a Raleigh funnel. It's not quite, but this particular schedule provides you with a snapshot just of the general fund. And it's interesting to look through department by department and functional area by category to see where the county ended up June 30th. And this is just a snapshot in time, but it's the, provides the monitoring that we can use for year-to-year reporting and comparisons. So in the general development area, there were unexpended funds in the amount of $284,000. Public safety, $254,000. Human services, $277,000. Everything that was appropriate for education was sent to the respective institutions, including the school and the public schools and the community college, economic development. So the Morgan Walker extension had about $5,000. Libraries, it was just a straight preparation to our regional partner. And what we have labeled now as recreation is what the community center had been reported as. And typically, that had fallen under the board of education since they had responsibilities there. Then, of course, your debt service. When the budget was approved for '23, '24, there was $815,000 in appropriated fund balance, most of which was for capital outlays and debt service obligations. That number was adjusted through the year to $1,034,000. And at the, and none of it was used. When the, when the year ended, the general fund fund balance marooned by $218,492. So it was a very good year. And by contrast with the year before, that was a good year too. And there were funds allocated for, again, likewise, capital and some debt service related to the middle school and to the, I think the Viper Radio project had some financing involved. And I think at that time, the county had appropriated close to $2 million. And in that year, they only used $300,000 to $400,000 out of the $2 million. Or maybe a half million, I don't remember. But anyhow, so swinging one year to the next, the board came out about $700,000 to be good. Again, as soon as we have the sign off from the auditor, we'll get you the full document with all of the different funds and descriptions and.
So having this in front of us with the different departments, do we have an idea of what number is being requested or proposed this year for this department? What the request is going to be for, just since we now have this to reference from?
Please bear in mind that the appointments typically don't end in the frigid, the fridge for the first assurance.
Right. So just, yeah, what they're proposed without approval from the office is theirs.
Well, I've got, I understand, kind of less benefits. I don't think we don't know, but less benefits. And then we, I included, just because we just sit there and play with numbers, you know, that we kind of know. And it's with the 5% salary increase that we kind of would like to see for employees. The total with everything, less benefits for just the, for the planning, zoning, economic development for, that's what we're using, like 315. And that's, again, with the increase. That's just an estimate. And then the same thing for building inspections. One hundred and thirty-one. It's just an estimate, very rough.
Again, with the benefits and salaries and what, we still haven't got confirmation on what our rates go before retirement, no?
Because.
We got.
Retirement, nothing that's concluded on anything but the property and liability and the work is comp. That's the only thing I truly know.
Insurance on, it's basically expecting increases, but correct.
We're expecting an increase, but we're not exactly sure how much at this moment.
She, she gave me an estimate the other day, but we meet with her next Friday to find out what the true figures are going to be.
Okay. Like I say, I know it was rough, and there's going to be numbers to have to play with, but just to try and get our head around some of it.
And basically, we handle all the recommendations for the potential cost of living centrally, and we won't include any of that until much later in the process.
Shall I have any questions, maybe one word about this here? No?
We're going to straight forward.
Okay, yeah, just checking, just checking. All right, so if that is all for this part, should we recess into the next section?
Sure. Well, Patrice is up next. And one bit of good news related to the relocation plans for Gitz to move into the county annex building and for the Gem's food pantry to move over to the Gitz building. We've been, actually, and I wish I would have thought of this while Lisa was here, because Lisa ran this for us. There is a grant application through the state employees credit union foundation. It's only available to nonprofit corporations or nonprofit organizations. So gems will qualify, and it's for $40,000 capacity building. And they have deemed that using that money for sub-engineering or architectural services at the current Gitz building to make the plans for the loading dock, the freezer space, possibly a portico that comes off the front to give some shelter from the weather, is possible. I've been in touch with Vanessa Truman, and we'll need to help her with that. And if she can provide the copies of the bylaws and all of that paperwork, we'll work with them to help pull that together. But the folks, we were on a Zoom call with the foundation folks in Raleigh, and they seemed very supportive of that. So we'll try to move with that, and I was grateful that Lisa made that contact.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think your grant was approved for the fence, the generator.
We're, we're getting close now for the fence and the generator to pick that up as we speak.
Well, the other good news is on the audit. I think William told, our, the transportation system is running like an enterprise fund, similar to water, the landfill and sewer. And your fund balance increased for next year. I mean, they ran a positive in the black again this year. So that, that's really rare, my experience with transportation programs, to not acquire a significant infusion of cash for the operation. So kudos to Mr. Patrice.
Where does the revenue come from if it's an enterprise?
We generate it from our services, pretty much.
You're going to charge raps, basically.
So not all people pay, but it's paid for different agencies like Medicaid, elderly services.
Those agencies pay.
Yes, and there's a little private pay money, but not a lot. So, yeah. And we get federal money for like admin vehicles, things like that, passed through the state, whatever. So, yeah, we have been running like a business for, since we started. And so our budget is a little bit different. It's a, I guess, a really working budget, because I can't really definitely tell you that this is how much money we're going to make, and this is what we're going to do. Because I don't really know who's going to ride, and we'll reimburse, we'll have reimbursement system or whatever. I can tell you what we've applied for, what we, what we probably approved, but we know what we have to do if we don't, or what we can offer. We kind of operate based on what we call a fully allocated cost system. So based on the expenses that we have, we generate what we call is a fully allocated cost. What, we say this is what it costs to run our service. Currently, we're saying that the fully allocated is $1.35 a mile. So we bill most agencies a $1.35 a mile. We bill like managed care because they gave it to us, $1.57 per mile, which from some of my cohorts, they said that that's kind of low and that I need to increase that. So we're looking to increase it this year. I've got to figure out what I have to put in to kind of show that increase, per se. So that's kind of how we kind of generate what we come up with. So next year, the only additional things that we'll be requesting is we're requesting a replacement vehicle. And what happens is the state tells us at what intervals we can ask for vehicles. And generally ours, because of the role nature of Gates County, comes up with miles. So for next year, we're only asking for one replacement vehicle. It's a light transit vehicle, number 34 is up for replacement. So we're asking for that vehicle to be replaced. And we're asking for a scheduling software system. Currently, we use a software system that is used by, it was created by the state and NC State. It's a kind of in-house system. So we're looking to purchase a system that will allow us to be more customer-friendly. It'll text the clients and tell them the job is on the way. It'll tell them what time to be ready. It'll tell them, you know, what to look for, different things of that sort. It'll tell us where they are, different things. It'll have tablets on the vehicles, so we will have, supposedly, we'll go paperless. So we'll click on the, on the tablet, and it'll download the data into our system as opposed to all the paper. Now, I'm not telling you that we won't have paper, because I don't quite understand what this concept of paperless is, since I print much paper. But that's kind of what we're looking for. Those are the additional things that we're asking for in the budget. The other things are just regular costs as opposed to our salaries, benefits, our expenses to be in the building, our rental, different things of that sort. Not sure exactly what I, well, won't be able to tell you.
If you would give the board some history on the hourly wages that the counties now, because they both worked the last couple of budgets to, to make some progress, because I think we were losing some staff to the school system and maybe other places.
Yes, so we started out with a system that we didn't have any money at all. So we started out with the minimum wage, and we worked ourselves up with salaries. So around us, you know, we are bedroom community. So it is very difficult to get people that have passed a background check, have a clean driving record, don't have multiple accidents. All those things they have to have to operate. You have, if you have, we like to have a clean driving record, but if you have more than three points, if you get three points, you cannot work for us. If you have two accidents within three years, you can't work for us. You have to pass a background check, you have to pass a drug test, and you have to submit to random FTA drug tests. So to work for us, you have to have all those things. You have to now be able to operate tablets and computers. So that is going to make it more difficult. So the bus, the bus drivers were making more money than we were. You know, a lot of people were picking the buses. Equally is that people were working at the gas station. They make more money than we do. People were choosing to go other places. So I talked to the county about trying to increase wages and actually trying to maintain wages, because I understand that Virginia is trying to increase their minimum wage. Even if we wait to increase the minimum wage until they do, then we increase it. Even if we wait to increase the minimum wage until they do, then we increase it and then someone gets a raise and we're still not competitive. So last year, the county increased the salaries of the drivers. Most of our drivers are actually part-time drivers. We have a few full-time drivers and but for the most part, most of them are part-time drivers and most of them are retired people. But people like to get paid for the services that they provide.
And these are CDLs.
Yeah, we now require CDLs. All our vehicles don't require that you have CDLs. But we had some issues with people having medical issues. So first we passed a ruling that you had to pass a medical, a CDL medical. So to make it cleaner, we just decided to pass the rule that you just had to have a Class B CDL with peer endorsement. So we did that. And so you have to have that now. It's not required on all vehicles. And then also because say you want, you're gonna drive this vehicle and something happens to that vehicle, and now I need you to drive this one. So now we gotta switch routes because this person doesn't have CDLs. So we're paying them for that, per se. So I appreciate the county allowing us to increase salaries. And I would appreciate you all being open to keeping the salaries up because it is important. Because an accident in Gates County with grandma on the van could cost the commissioners a lot of sleepless nights, you know. And I'll be really honest, I've been here for a considerable amount of time. I'm real nervous. I'll be honest. I would like to leave here on a positive. I've had minimal accidents, but they've been minimal. I don't want anybody calling me telling me that they had major things happening. We do have certain trainings that the state requires. You have to be able to pass those too, I should say. But so we want to pay people for what they do. If you, we ask them to be qualified, you know, you don't just want somebody that can just drive. You want somebody that is qualified to drive. You want a professional to drive you. So that's what we're asking for, to be able to employ professionals.
Can you talk about your schedule? Because they get folks on the road really early.
So our times start at five o'clock in the morning and we are can drive from five o'clock in the morning to seven o'clock in the evening. So it because of the role nature of the county and the way we have vehicles, people, people assume that people that live on this side would go to Edington and that side would go to Elizabeth City, but that's not how it works. People, we pick up all around the county and then you go to Hurford County. We pick up all around the county and then we go to Elizabeth City. So we sometimes take twenty minutes to get from one person to the other, to just get them there. And we, what we did when we started out planning our times, we we planned around major metal. Like we originally planned around dialysis, cancer patients, whatever. That's how we started our transportation system around those things. So that's how the times were started. And we actually started that, like some transit, say they go places, they have people to go. First thing in the morning, they pick them up and bring them back in the evening. But we we have services like, say, we take them eight o'clock, we come back and pick them back up. I mean, we pick back up over here, we go back at ten thirty. We pick up from there and come back at twelve, so that the time is not as long. But it takes a period of time to drop people off or whatever. I will be honest with you, one of the things that we intend to work on a lot this year, and we're hoping to get some assistance because we've applied for some planning grants or whatever, is to improve our presence in the county. It is very difficult to provide transportation in the county because you have one vehicle in the county and you're on this side and they need transportation on that side, it still doesn't help. So most of our transportation within the county is coming from different areas. So we have talked about doing different modes of transportation, trying to get some services like I say Uber, because we know we won't have Uber in Gates County, but we have Gates County's version of Uber for Clip or whoever you want to. So we're looking to, we've applied for some planning or planning information to try to look to do some of those types of services. And there are some people that are just not gonna ride public transportation. They're just not. And a lot of our elderly people have gotten to that point. You know, during the pandemic, they decided, I'm not riding this person or that person, it's not safe. So we're looking to try to do some of that. But in doing that, we know that we need to do it. Back when transportation was started, one of the things that was promised to the county is that we would operate the system and not cost the county anything. So for the years since nineteen ninety-nine, when we started, we operated this system and we've not cost the county anything. Now, I can't tell you how long that's gonna go on, but I'm gonna try to make it work as long as I'm here. Or whatever. So we're working to try to do that. But we're trying to make our service be a good service, to be a safe and to provide quality. But to do that, we gotta have good staff. We pay them peanuts and they act like monkeys. I guess, you know, say that because you're peanuts and monkey, but I don't.
The money's right out of the way now. I don't recall.
Eighteen ninety to start.
It's eighteen ninety now, yes.
Took us a while to get there, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah, it took a while to get there.
So I was trying to remember what it was when I first came on the board. Substantially go.
Yeah.
So I have information to eighteen in here. I know, we don't have a mouse.
Tell me, look, or the. Would that be contracted without through GITS or would that be GITS individual car fleet that would be transporting?
So we've not gotten that far yet. We, when I first started, we did contracts. Contracts are okay, but if we contract out, one of the things that we have to do is we have to make sure that the contract is meet all the standards that we do. So we spend a lot of time making sure that they have the insurance they need, this, that, that. It would probably end up meaning that we would have to have backup insurance because if something happens and they're they're transporting people that we get them transporting and they didn't have an insurance, the county would have to pay. So that's kind of why we stopped using contractors. But the thing is with, if we start doing something like Google or Clip, whatever, we can't use the vehicles that we have now because the vehicles that we have now are purchased with federal transit administration dollars and they are only for coordinated transportation. So we wouldn't be able to do that. So we'd have to find funding. And that's why we are looking to see if we can find planning money to do that or whatever.
And your schedule on the software, did you look at Patrice? Is that, would you use federal funds to be able to purchase that or is that?
So as I understand now, unless something happens, we're on on target to be able to use a federal fund to get. Yeah, we apply for federal funds to get software.
Yeah, it's probably important to note the advantage of doing the CDO Class B is as I said earlier, the drivers are required to get a medical card.
Yeah.
And so the medical card kind of reduces the liability on us that's a health condition that we didn't know about, that the doctor did, and he still let him get a medical card. He can be liable instead of the county. So it helps to stay at that level, CDO Class B required medical card. So that's good.
Yeah, I got a bunch of questions. I'm sorry. I'm waiting on your question. I'm confused on a couple of things. One is that, I mean, I thought when Lisa didn't give us any number or anything, I was like, okay, well, just increase it. We just seem like salary prices. But with yours, I believe we don't understand requesting from us, but you're saying then costs is anything. You get different sources. I have no idea from the discussion of where the money comes from, flows to, what expenditures. To be honest, if you're truly enterprise fund and nothing's coming from the county, I'm not even sure why you need us to do anything.
Okay, so some years ago, this was kind of how GITS got started. Originally, Gates County had the opportunity to go in with CTPA. They decided not to. They had the opportunity to go with ICPTA. They decided not to.
And what what are the subsequent?
Okay, ICPTA, I mean, is inter-county transit. That's in Elizabeth City. CTPA is Chona Public Transit Authority. Both of those systems are multi-county systems and they are public authorities. When we started up, we started as a system. We were county, but we were not under the county. So actually, how we ended up under the county, we got approved for the the state to purchase a building for us. We came to the county because they were like, we can't understand how you operate. The health department, there's your funding, you're under the extension service, you this, that, you know, we're not gonna purchase the building and we don't know who owns it. So we came to the county. So if we were not under you and we became a public authority, then you would have no jurisdiction over us. But we could levy taxes or whatever, you could still have to pay. Like if you was, we were under inter-county or funded CTPA, then you would, you would have to pay the matching funds or the cost. So that was why the county decided not to do that and to stay with their own system because you govern us. But at this point, you don't have to put in anything.
We don't need what don't want. So when you, that's what I'm getting at. It sounds like honestly, that's a better explanation now. I think again, it more of it sounds like then like when you request vehicles, we have to approve you purchasing one, but you're gonna get.
All of the.
From somewhere else?
The grants come to the county. The vehicles actually belong to the county. They just have a lien on them by the state until they have met their life expectancy. All of the grants come to the county. They don't come to GITS. GITS is a part of the county. We are a department of the county. So all the grants that we apply for, we apply from the county. So it's the county getting the money. It's just we are.
So you literally have no impact on the tax base from a direct.
Not from a local, per se. So, yeah. So, yes, so we apply each year, we apply for administrative funds from NC DOT. They get their funds from LTA, comes through NC DOT. They match whatever they're part of it that they're gonna match. And it comes to us. We have our match, we make our matches through our funds at this point. Most systems, the county pays the match.
All right, next question. So I'm a CDL guy, okay? Also had a staff where I need to hire people or get them trained in CDL. That's hard to do nowadays, getting them in the classes whether it's Class B or A or C, whatever. All of them are hard to get into class. And then the medical parts are separate, a whole nother separate thing. But salary wise, I mean, just asking for an increase, I'm not generally opposed to that, especially if it's not coming down our tax base. But I mean, have you got some other rule of thumb that you're using as what others pay? Like what the Elizabeth City based group pays or what the Chonan group pays?
So we did, we did a assessment and found out what each county around us pay. We do that randomly because we do have like an association, a transportation association. So we kind of have a group and we did randomly figure out which, what other counties pay. And.
So where do we fall with that?
So right now, we're pretty much on target. Some people pay differently. Like some people may pay a little more an hour, a little less.
Generally the same range?
Yeah, generally the same range. Some people pay benefits. We don't have as many benefit people. Basically, I'll be honest, we don't power as many full-time people because.
That's a bit tougher. So maybe get a CDL to work part-time.
Yeah, it is. But it's tough to have a system that you work people full-time because if people don't ride.
Right.
What what do you do with them? Yeah, you just.
Do a lot of labor work.
Yeah, you know, so and it's just, it's it's kind of just hard to.
Do the other guys or y'all either want to offer like the training to get them their CDL, like hire them, give them sixty days or ninety days to complete the course?
So now you want to give up secrets, but.
I did the same thing. I had to do that a couple of times. I'd say, I'll put you through the training, but I want to your commitment before you move on or quit.
So what we've been trying to do is hire people that have CDLs. Originally, when we first, the people that we had that didn't have them, we worked with the school and they got.
School bus driver, yeah, yeah. They now have the one down at the Edington, the school down there that's COA runs, that you can get in pretty well. Just so you know, if you don't know it, they say that if you call them up, if you're a local governmental entity, they'll push your people into the class in the middle of session. So you don't have to wait five or six weeks. Yeah, I hope that's working. But we don't, are you telling me though, that we don't really offer that right now as far as the training?
We haven't, we haven't. We have many requests, anybody for us to help them to get their CDLs since we we get the other people's CDLs, whatever.
We would just say we use that to recruit a little better if we offer that. Thank you, thank you.
There's a few questions. I didn't know all that history. I mean.
And just to answer Commissioner Credit, two thousand and nineteen, our part-time GITS drivers made twelve dollars and twenty-six cents. And that was the very first increase on the salary study at a match group that got them to twelve dollars and twenty-six.
I should say too, both my parents were bus drivers. I grew up riding a school bus with my mom and my dad lived city bus in Norfolk for his entire career. Some of the school bus drivers and bus drivers in general.
Well, I'm curious, have you given any more thought to having a potential electric vehicle charging station out of the county? Actually, we talked about that because there's the one in the top of the restaurant, but but there was some discussion if there was a grant available to secure through the state. They have intermodal grant programs and for folks who might be coming here to the state park or just driving through, having a, it'd be a service, a courtesy for for folks. And I'm glad we didn't have to put one in the USDA building because that was only gonna be for USDA vehicles. We couldn't use that for anything. But I didn't know if you'd had any more.
So I was told not to mention electric vehicles this year.
By who? Hey, make this more questions.
Yeah, they said that in government now, electric vehicles is a, that's one of the terms.
I worked something new.
Not talking about electric vehicles this year. It's one of those things we're staying away from.
Well, as one of our other thoughts was, if she got her Google vehicles, was that our county annex building could be a pickup and drop-off. Well, actually a safe place to pick up a ride, there's a glassed-in tunnel, not tunnel, but causeway between the health department and the county annex where it could be a shelter. If it was a rainy or a cold night, somebody could take shelter till the ride came up. So there's, it still be a.
Yeah, we're not giving up on it. We're just not gonna talk about that to that side right now. It's not a conversation that I need to get to try having, yes. I left that portion out of the conversation.
And when it comes to issues like in climate weather, Patrice, first folks I talked, you made that wind a month or so ago. We're in the middle of the day. We were gonna have real high winds and with the size of her vehicles, we had some discussion about adjusting schedules to get their folks off the road earlier in the course of the snow or ice. With her drivers leaving the house at four o'clock in the morning to get to work, we've we've often looked to her to just keep it as safe as she can.
And one of the other things that I'll say is, this year has been a really rough year for us. Transportation since I've been here has been coordinated transportation. It's been one of the things that has been the most important, but because of managed care and the contracts that we have in order to keep funds coming, we had to kind of change some of the concepts that we have been using. So and even getting grades and stuff. It's been a little different because there with the managed care systems with the insurance companies competing for different people's insurance, they want their people taken home immediately. So what we've always done is we took them home in order. But at this point with managed care, they like to put a time limit. Say if you pick them up at five, you need to drop them off at home by six. If you didn't drop them off by six, then they started docking how much money you got or you had to come up with the reasons why. So it's been really difficult this year. And I really don't like being graded, but you know, looking at the scores, I'm like, oh, Lord, we're late. Okay, the score went down, you know, but so that's one of the reasons why our transportation, it wasn't great inside the county at first. And it it didn't do, it did worse to me this year. And that's one of the things I do hate. So that's one of the reasons that we were really working on that, trying to find, you know, a different.
Your scoring system should be based on your customers, not the insurance company. No offense, I don't really care. They think you're doing very, you're equal your serving.
And the thing about that is, and I wouldn't either, but they pay the money. And the thing about that is, and I wouldn't either, but they pay the money so that we're able to transport these people who don't have money. So that's the only reason that I do care, you know, because if they grade you and your grade is low, right now it doesn't really matter because there's nobody competing with us really, but if the grade, say your grade went down and then somebody came in competition with you, then the person that has the highest grade is the people that get the people. So we make money on those contracts that we're able to carry the eight, this eighty-year-old person or this person that is going to work and only paying two dollars, that's how we're able to keep them going. So that's why I care about the grading system. No, I, you know, I, I would be okay with failing as long as you all are okay with it. But that was a problem, so that's why it's been difficult.
I'm sorry. Another question, I think I know the answer remains, anyway. So if somebody in the county isn't needing transportation for a medical appointment or some other issue that's maybe supported by an agency, do they have the ability to engage your services?
Anybody can ride.
So how do they do that?
They just call and say, you know, they, we have a schedule, which, where we go at different times, they call us, they set it up, and their private payment is two dollars where they wanna go, if they're going inside the county, it's four dollars if they're going to Herford County.
So you're gonna pin that on Renee's Facebook page? That little bit of information, somebody goes there and can say that?
Yeah, it's on our webpage, it's on our webpage.
I think that's a big thing, just a little quick, two bucks to travel in the river, call us, I'm like.
And it sounds, if I don't look, a lot of people call us, we're, they say, well, you said anybody can ride. Well, we're not really gonna pick up the whole state of Virginia.
Somebody asked me that, I didn't know the answer from my neighbors, so I said, in any river, and I'm like, I haven't.
So for us, as long as we pick up or drop off in Gates County, we can do it, like in Virginia. Like in Herford County, if we're in Herford County and we can pick up somebody and drop somebody off while we're over there, that's fine. But in Virginia, we don't have the license to pick up and drop off in Virginia. But we can drop off in Virginia, we can pick up and bring them back to Gates County, but we can't.
Take a round trip there.
We can do round trip, as long as the destination or the origin is in the county.
Yeah.
I noticed earlier in the presentation, you mentioned that you can purchase one vehicle before the year twenty twenty-six. Have the agency look at purchasing versus leasing?
Yes, so for leasing, we would pay. For purchasing, we pay, we pay a ten percent match. So that's one of the things that we've done, like, I know the county is going to leasing a lot of things, but us, whatever we get from this, from the federal government or whatever, we pay a ten percent match. It's like a, like, but vehicles is a eighty, ten, ten, the federal government pays eight, the state pays ten, and we pay ten. So for us, say if it's a hundred thousand dollar van, we pay ten thousand dollars. And so for us, the lease, we would have to pay, and we don't wanna do it. With you, or whatever, and.
I know we're running past the time, this is something that went short, but the next time maybe we. What's the age of your fleet, like oldest vehicle versus the newest?
So our oldest vehicle, one thing is, our fleet is very new, because we, um, we run a miles or whatever, a hundred thousand. So probably my oldest vehicle is probably, probably twenty, twenty-one.
Really?
Yeah. And that's probably an old vehicle, and it, it generally takes, the thing that takes so long is because like, like right now, we're writing a grant for twenty twenty-seven, so we would project at, in June, what that mileage would be for twenty twenty-seven. So then when it came to twenty twenty-seven, you would order that vehicle, and depending on how long it took, like we won a van last year, because of how long it's taken to build that van, I haven't gotten that vehicle from last year yet.
Which causes all kinds of problems.
That's a real issue.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'm very interested, but I'll, I'll just, one more question. Actually, it's probably not, no bigger points, but who does your maintenance on your vehicles?
So we, because we don't contract with one person, because if you contract with one person, then we have to, we have to monitor their agency, we do use different people. Um, so we use Dixie, we use Casper, we use the Dodge deal, we use the Ford deal, we use different people.
Good, alright, I'll start.
Anybody can get a piece of the. We have like a, um, a sheet that you have to have, there, every six thousand miles, we take our vehicles to the service. It tells you at each interval what they're supposed to look for, they bill that out. And, um, we are monitored on that, we'll, we're audited on that, or whatever, so.
Very good. Press it, press it.
You do a great job. Well, we're in health attacks, and, and we hope, we hope that Taylor can have a tenure just as long as the troops. Because she started sort of, sort of young. I hope not. For the board's benefit, I hope you'll understand and appreciate, she, she came into a, a situation where she had to dig herself out in a few holes. And I guess the states are a good one to use as an example.
We were about five and a half years behind on the state files.
State files?
When people pass.
Yeah.
Um, if they don't have heirs, it just goes if they had heirs, but if they have an estate, they say, I'm leaving it to a specific person. So we essentially had five years of invalid owners of the property, of the cars. Um, it's like I said, mom and dad passed, and they had three kids, and I wanted to go to one or all three, and it's still in mom and dad's name, and they've been passed for five and a half years. Uh, I have got it brought up to twenty twenty-four's before we did the revow, so I've got us fairly close. And my goal is, once we get these revow notices out and I get a little bit more time, I'm gonna get us caught up to the current point in twenty twenty-five and then start doing them monthly like our deeds, so we just don't get that far behind again. That was one of those.
And she's also reactivated our, uh, business personal property, uh, auditing and verification process. The county had done that for many, many years, but they had just ended at some point in the last couple of.
Um, the last discovery that I saw was in two thousand and nineteen, so another five-year-plus gap.
And I think we've had pretty good results and good feedback, and if you're not getting calls about it, that means it's really, really well. This really is a service to.
We, we have one that was a pretty, pretty hefty bill, and I thought for sure we were gonna get an appeal on it, but after the county tax services and myself kinda explained what happened, they paid it. They paid their fifty percent penalty for not listing those assets for five years. And we got it all collected, so I thought for sure y'all were gonna get a appeal on that one. I, I already was getting, y'all need to start getting the asset list on this one, but we gotta pay it, and it'd be about thirty-two thousand dollars in taxes.
Yeah, that says a lot from her effort over there.
So that was, I, I thought we were gonna get one for sure on that. Where would we like to start? Y'all have a preference? I brought lots of stuff.
Just tell us what your challenges are, your priorities.
I just want to say what the groups you have, so you, the categories of your work, how's that broken up?
We have four people in our department, and it's kind of just the workload, because taxes are so specialized that it kinda goes to one person specifically.
They all do equally the same stuff, there's not like one that concentrates on, say, like say heirs concentrating on.
That's me, well, it's all, because it is so specialized, I mean, we, when you look at my position, I'm checking deeds, I'm checking estates, I'm doing land deeds, I'm doing deferred, and then I have Jennifer, she's specializing more in personal property, like your vehicles.
Right.
You know, some counties don't do this, but we've noticed on just a short period of time when we were short staffed, we lost a noticeable amount of revenue, every single vehicle that goes across. Um, the tech values, like I, I think we discussed this briefly about one of the appeals we had, when they enter it in, there's no one double checking it behind your system. So there could be people who paid, you know, they had a specialty vehicle and that did not get picked up in the tech system.
Right, right.
And we have to go in and put all the modifications in. You bought a camper trailer, and both of y'all bought a brand-new twenty twenty-four Vibe, well, yours might be twenty-six foot long, and you might have a thirty-six foot toy hauler, and they're gonna come up with five thousand dollars because tech has not the slightest idea on the difference of your campers. They're both gonna have the same value, so we have to have one person sit there, and every single vehicle and trailer that's getting taxed in the county, they need to go through that list every month and make sure that they're getting the appropriate reductions, that they're being charged correctly, the right vehicles is matching up to the VIN. I mean, I have one person that's, that's her seat, if she's checking that, and other than that, she's, you know, waiting on the phones, the emails, customer service up front. Um, Ms. Lori and me and her kinda work with the foreclosures together, and she does a lot of the finance paperwork, like the tax collector's report, the daily stuff, she's crunching numbers all day. And once we get all of our daily numbers crunched, she's like, okay, now we gotta go in, we have these fees to add from the ZLS.
I got you, yeah.
She's the one who's legal, and then I've got one that's.
I was just looking, it's like, if, and when y'all did, if it was really a big group category, so, and neither of you will be assigned to ever. I was questioning you about your.
Everything is just kinda so specialized.
Yeah.
That it's hard to get one person to be really well-versed enough to do everything. Just like the, the vehicles that we're talking about, disabled vets, well, they can't get it unless they're a hundred percent disabled by VA, they get a specialty vehicle from the VA, so we have people that's checking for exemptions on vehicles, just vehicles. Then they gotta go in, I have some people who get exemptions for the real estate. So it's just, it, it's so specialized, it's hard for one person to be able to do everything. I do have a lot of here. So, uh, since we kinda brushed on the different categories of what's done in the ZLS, you do foreclosure paperwork, you can worry. Um, I did get an email back, I know we briefly talked about possibly moving some of these to in-room foreclosures. I don't think we need to do that for this year, I think we need to kinda plan and maybe do that on an upcoming year. Just simply because we haven't quite got a good grasp of the fees, we wouldn't know how much to set aside for a budget. We're still way in the early stages of that. I do have emails that I would be more than glad to give everyone copies of, but we have a list of our foreclosure properties, and I'm working through ZKIS with them. The in-room is gonna be a more costly foreclosure procedure, but it will be able to get some of those really stubborn, really hard-to-get parcels kinda taken away from the tax base, but it's gonna cost more, and not all the cost may be recuperated by the foreclosure sale. So those are gonna kinda need to be looked at at individual basis, because this warrant done for the more expensive foreclosure, or is the county gonna take a complete wash by doing this? Um, a good example of this is that very difficult property that I've brought up a couple of times, the Booker area property. They reached out, after the research I sent them, it is a one hundred and twenty air party case. So by time, even on the mortgage style, which is the, the, um, more cost-effective, more time-consuming, but more cost-effective for foreclosure, we're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars in attorney fees, mostly because they're gonna have to serve one hundred and twenty heirs. Now, the property is owing almost twenty-five thousand dollars in taxes, so by time this hits the auction, we have to get fifty plus to cover the cost to take this auction.
This is great conversation, but, um, I was just alerted that way. Um, due to the scope of today being a budget session, we are not able to speak contracts in that manner. It has to stick to the budget, like the finance portion of it.
I'm just saying, this is, this is one that I'm saying, I think we need to wait on to get a budget line for it, because these fees are gonna vary, like there's another one that's an eleven case, they're looking at like twelve fifty.
Okay.
So those, the lines are just so large, I think we need a larger case study to look at before we decide to put any money aside for the in-room.
No, that makes sense, yeah.
But I, I do have the emails to have the examples of those fees and why I'm suggesting to wait till we get some more information before we try to budget on those. And I will make those out momentarily.
So, I'm gonna stick to, like you said, what's on the agenda. Reasonably though, for something that has a hundred and twenty heirs, take the long route, you're missing potential tax revenue for as long as that directs out, right? So when you account and talk about the cost, and we're gonna advertise these, I mean, they're not savings to some extent of us collecting revenue sooner, if we can get it off the books, so to speak, and potentially maybe get a viable tax. Taxable property again?
We, it, that kinda just depends again on the in-room, like I said, it's, it's more or less how much money is the county willing to put up for this, cause that's the mortgage style, just that many years, we're looking at twenty-five. So an in-room would be more than that.
I get the difference in the two, I was simply saying, when you're evaluating two, you're taking them down at one super quick, so it might be a year or two sooner, you'll start collecting, potentially collecting taxes for your own property.
Yes.
Versus the other might be more cost-effective.
Yeah, that's, that's what, um.
Alright, that's.
And I will say, I think in this, like, it was first brought up to you not long ago when we had the discussions, it's, it's a new conversation, like, so she hasn't been looking into this her mom.
This has been just a couple months of, of a new program that they have started, and that's what I'm saying, um, we've, we had briefly discussed doing the in-rounds, but I think it does not need to be anywhere part of our budget this year, cause we would probably need to do a separate line for it than our standard accounting fees. And I don't think we have a big enough base set to even estimate how much fees we would need.
And this is where I was gonna turn to County Government, should you get to a place where you are prepared much earlier than, say, next year, would that be an amendment option at that time if needed?
Absolutely.
So it could always be done later, next year. I just wanted that to be.
What did you say?
I kinda wanted it, yeah, just kinda stated for anybody that might listen later, but it can be done earlier.
And this, this is a new program with the law firm, and it would also not only give us more time to get a better idea of these figures, it gets them a little bit more streamlined in doing this new foreclosure, cause this has just become an option in, like you said, maybe two months.
Right.
Um, so we, we definitely want them to get a little bit more experience and streamline with it and have a bigger base. I just don't think it's feasible right now to try to add that anywhere in the budget, because of those two figures they threw were so different. There's, there's no way to be able to tell how much we would need to put aside for that quite yet.
But these are great examples of workload challenges.
We, we have come across a few. So when I do go over my, um, budget line items, I do have just a couple changes for the most part. Obviously, we have service fees, so they're kinda set. Um, one of the increases that I did want to ask for was for the professional services through DMV, just because we already by March had used more than what we had planned on in the last budget. I did want to increase that, just to be able to cover for the services DMV provides with us. For the equipment line, I did request more in that line also, because we do have some filing cabinets and some desks that are breaking, that need replacement.
Are we looking at options of this, this, that's kind of, obviously, to see this kind of thing at some point? Yeah, you're right, right now, I'm just saying.
I say, and very late, if it needs to be emailed, if, if not.
Cause we usually produce a list of recommended capital outlay or.
I'm just saying, if I, if I saw, I would could mark on there now, I think it would be interesting, but.
Yeah, I can definitely email all of this to y'all, um, Friday, cause I will be out of the office tomorrow. Um, for the travel line, I did request less funds in that, because now that I've only had one more class, I shouldn't need as much travel. For postage, I am requesting a pretty significant increase on that. Um, one of the reasons being, this year we sent out our, what's called second notice letters, that's the letters that have gone out before they go to the paper. This is the first year we've included gap bills in it, and that is one of the points that I was talking to this morning. That was almost a seventy thousand dollar increase we received in the month of March after sending out the gap bills compared to last year's. So I do think that that is a good program to continue doing, sending them out, because it does, the, and the biggest thing isn't that people don't know that they had the bill, it's been, you know, you get a piece of paper in the mail, you set it down, it can get lost very easily. This is just a second reminder, hey, we still have this gap bill, we explained to them the timeframe, and it's been a very good collection. So I do think we need to continue sending those, which is why I increased the postage.
So, this is three or four thousand dollars, I, I don't know, what, what?
Um, I am asking for about twenty-five hundred, cause that's how much, I'm sure we spent.
Twenty-five hundred versus seventy.
We have seventy thousand back. We have seventy thousand back.
That's, yeah, pretty good rate of return.
And, um, for my, the repairs and maintenance, the building and equipment line, um, buildings and grounds did advise ten, so I put five in each line, that's what buildings and grounds had advised. Um, on my other services line, I did request a two thousand dollar increase and that is because Lexus Nexus, one of the services we use, had a service rating. Um, and the last line that I asked an increase in is my bonds and dues. I updated a hundred dollars because my bond is, went up to twenty-two. I do have my service and maintenance contract, we had a little bit more in it because we had to pay Vitex last service from when we switched from Keystone to Vitex. And we're not gonna need that last service check anymore, cause they've been paid. So I dropped that back down to cover, um, what are actual service lines we are using. What else would we like to cover?
Okay, there's any other questions for her?
No.
No, I, I mean, I like what you're doing, I mean, I, I see what you're doing in your budget, you know, it costs more this year, but it's not costing last year, this year, you're moving your money.
I like that, yeah, that you're adjusting.
Yeah, well, sure.
I did, I did try to put notes, um, I wasn't aware that we weren't gonna have copies of these, but that's my bad, but I will definitely email you copies. I did write notes for the justification of why I made those decisions.
Okay, that's perfect, yeah.
That's kind of really what I was expecting.
So you have the notes already in there?
Yeah, they're typed in, I, I'll just email you all the copies, they're already typed in. And I'll, I'll highlight the sections that I am asking for the taking, whether it be lower than or higher.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Your passion for this really shows.
Yeah.
I can tell you live and breathe, this, it, it shows a lot.
I know, I, I. Actually, no, but I appreciate that. I, I was, I was always taught to take pride in work and do your thing and do the best of your ability and that's the way I try to continue it.
It, it shows.
So we do.
Structure, everything's precise, I know exactly, it's all conveyed well.
And I, I. Um, speaking of revow, I do have, um, I sent the file to South Data, they are updating the templates, the, um, which I have copies here of the blank templates, I will be more than happy to pass out to everybody. They are formatting the information to go in as we speak and as soon as that IT ticket has been posted, it will take them two days to print and post it. As of right now, it's next week, just because they have not resolved the IT ticket yet to finish the template.
Okay. I'll say, we do have one action item for tax that we need to look at today, um, and that is on the second page of your packet that she had passed around. Um, and this is the, this is the, yeah, the, the order to advertise the twenty-two tax liens. Um, so we have to, um, ma- make a motion to approve this per NC general statute one zero five three six nine. Uh, it says upon receipt of the tax collector's report of the untamed twenty-two taxes that are lien on real property in North Carolina, are in Gates County, and pursuant to the North Carolina general statute one zero five three six nine, that Gates County Board of Commissioner, County Commissioners hereby orders the tax collector to advertise these liens and continue to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. Um, approved this day, April second, twenty-two five, so, um, this is kind of a have to, have to make it a legal type thing, so if we can get a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, show of hands, aye, all four. All right, none opposed, so that passes? Thank you, gentlemen. All right.
Any other? And I'm gonna pass some of these out, like I said, I have the blank templates, the emails that the years from ZLS. The, uh, I actually do have some building code sheets for our revow cards because I'm sure y'all are gonna be first and second for the calls, so, uh, I did get this little nice cheat sheet of what all the codes on the revow cards will look like when you, when you see the bills.
And unfortunately, again, because it's not budget related, we can't talk about revow today. Even if it's, if we are in it.
You didn't ask the question of what, like, the guys are still driving visiting properties?
They're done with all the field work, they're constructing and revow.
Somebody's asked that.
That's a, that's a fair question and, and revow is how we build revenue base for that and way, but if one of you are about.
Just, do you have any idea of when you might have some projected?
I finished this today.
Here.
I finished it today. Uh, they are very, very, very rough estimates on what they are, but I ran every possible report to get an estimation of those figures.
We were talking today, one of the things I was wondering, I don't know when you get with the utilities.
We don't get those till September.
Yeah.
Um, I, I did. Yeah, that's, uh, that's the yellow line on this color copy, which I would hand out to all of y'all as well. I just dropped it down, um, about five hundred, six hundred thousand for the simple that, because we are on a revow year. Our, um, depreciation schedule for public utilities is gonna be much lower. Plus, we don't know what kind of new items that they're gonna be getting, so I didn't think we would have very much depreciation with that lower depreciation rate. And I also don't think that they're gonna have a totally not get any property this year.
I just wanted you to know, I knew I was answering kind of wrongly, just being, if you expected to have anything.
I was scrambling today to try to get as much information as I could, um. I did get some information in two DOR, but it's not back and finalized and that's why these are still kind of rough estimates. But I do have them and I'm going to pass them out and our color code.
Color code is my language.
And this is really key, we just got our audit for the year, the end of June thirty-twenty-four, which was, uh, the first budget for Taylor and I to, to work together. And her estimate on the, uh, tax base that was in your budget ordinance was a billion twenty-six million five hundred and sixty-six thousand. And the audited, um, final estimate was a billion twenty-seven million. So, I mean, she was right, right on the money and that includes discoveries and, um, but.
That's less than one percent.
We, we had a good year last year working through the exercise. Uh, the first year here, um, was a, a little bit more of a challenge, but she has jumped in and, and that was prior to her assuming that role. I'm excited that she's got a number for us to begin.
And, uh, these also do not include discoveries. These were just based off of what we were kind of seeing more with the rebound side of it. Uh, so I, I don't have discoveries on there, so my numbers are gonna be a little bit off from what Mrs. Howard just said, but, um, for my, cause I have previous year.
Which means her numbers overlap, so.
Yeah. We are gonna expect a lot more discoveries as well from that business audit program, cause that's gonna be bringing in more discoveries as well. So that is not in here yet, this is based more on lines of kind of what's more guaranteed, the discoveries are less guaranteed because that just depends on what they find, roll back, who takes it out of the program, that sort of thing. Um, so my numbers from what Mrs. Howard did just say up here are slightly different, but that is because we don't have the discoveries on it.
Hold on here, one more question, you're talking about, how many employees do you have, did you say four as well?
Smallst of the. And you see us in class, they're so surprised when they ask who does what job.
We are.
Everybody. So what, what is the average number of employees for a county our size?
It really depends more or less on how rural the county is, we're kind of the only one this size with how rural we are, um. But I think one of the other smaller numbers that I've seen was about six. But like I said, they're a little bit, had a little bit more to go on, more businesses, more.
Terrell County are one of those guys that are super. Big decent property, no commercial business, not many houses.
And in our case, the GIS function is in the planning and zoning, I mean, there are tax offices that do the, do the GIS centrally for the county. So there, there are different ways to organize.
Just my position alone is a good example, I'm a tax administrator, but that's actually a, a tax collector and a real estate assessor combined. So my position covers two in a normal basis for counties.
Are you originally from Gates County?
No, it's born and suffered. My family's from Gates.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking this, cause I'm thinking if you're doing two jobs, they're gonna develop quickly. Let's go try recruiting, if that's the way.
Well, I live there. I live, I live not far from you, I'm thirty-two.
Do you really?
We're the, we're the greenhouse with all the cars.
Really? I figured.
Yeah, um, so we're pretty close, but no, um, I have family from here, so I was just across the border.
For our start decision.
Any other questions before I start passing these out?
I do.
You wanna move sheet first?
Sure, I'll take one.
You wanna read down ones?
I know you, I know you, I say, I know you probably don't want the rest of this stuff.
So, I tell you about our supervisor, my supervisor, it's not like hell, but the other night, our meeting started, actually, the work session started at five. Meet for this county supervisor, um, so we had to present on.
We need to cover.
I don't know, yeah. But the meeting started at five, work session six, we started open meeting and it ended at twelve fifteen, maybe. What?
Oh. Twelve fifteen?
Twelve fifteen. Yes, indeed.
Yeah, early in my career, I used to give home after Johnny Carson's. And my wife used to give him a word and he'd be like.
We had, they had voted at quarter to twelve, then, like, vote extend the meeting for the next day. I did say, I, I watched, I had to watch the video the next day, the whole first period of the morning, watching the video. It was all, it was all winter issues.
No, I haven't got the video. Yeah.
You don't have the policy.
Always gonna try to get a good answer, all right.
It's the church.
You, you know what I was gonna say.
You want that one paper, that's all you needed, you fucking explode with it. Well, that's.
I'm just talking about.
I am not calling asking the cell phone.
All right, good dog, is it on the floor? Told us why.
The problem is, they got so many resources pulled the other side of the state.
Okay.
So we're still active, we patrol them.
Yeah.
Right, which man is gonna assist me? Open it.
I gotta tell you.
Seriously, I think it might be the man. If you just, um, like that. I have no shame.
Well, you know, we lived a quarter, two years, so like every mother neighbor that works, gator fast. Timmy was playing high school football, he had various activities, you know. And they had, I remember, Florida, I remember, they had a playmate. Yeah, wow, yeah, he was a little boy down there. And they had a freshman there, uh, little rich kid school, something, really, he did scholarships there, they would have.
The DMV?
Back, back, so he went to that freshman school. His family's, we're, we're just, I think I'm like twenty, they go from. In the, the, the. But if you're, that, that kind of got a lot of, it's pretty big, they're coming out here. Like a statue of nonsense in there. Well, this is the first time in a while we've had all under one C's in the front.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be a, it's gonna be a deal.
It should be.
Question from the dad, years ago, she was a behaviorally, massive, she apologized to her sister, whatever. And so that's my wife, she's not one of them to do, just, and she's in Philly, she's like, no, you're not, you're not. My kid is more than in Charlotte.
I'm paranoid.
She was seven, how old was she, she got like seven, eight, right? Except in East State, we did most, did you ever go to Gen Tech? And she just gave us a char, a question to the wife, you're beautiful, why don't you go to DC State? Yeah, she likes, I see, I see, the school's been explored, the university before, had an extremely sharp edge. She's really promoted, she's, she's amazing, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you. All right.
Good afternoon.
I guess we need to move into emergency management.
So, my name is, uh, William Dogall, one of the building and emergency director and fire marshal for Gates County. Here today to talk about the upcoming budget, but kind of wanted to tell about the department a little bit. So emergency management programs are designed to establish a comprehensive approach to handling disasters, including natural, technology, and human-made disasters. The goal is to enhance community resilience and reduce vulnerability, that's the main focus that we have. Our core concepts fall under barriers mitigation, response, and recovery. Those things would include things like training, public education drills, notifications, warnings, risk management, infrastructure improvement, hazardous production proj- projects, um, operating the emergency operating systems, deploying resources, and coordinating responses, as well as debris management, rebuilding efforts and financial assistance program. Luckily, we haven't had much recovery, so we've been fortunate. Um, under the fire marshal, the fire is part of the fire prevention, fire prevention part of our fire protection system. This program aims to reduce fire-related risk through education, enforcement, engineering. Key objectives include protection of lives, minimum of property damage, and ensuring, um, compliance with fire codes. And also here at Unique County in Gates County, we have a, a little bit of a leading role in assisting the volunteer fire departments and and different programs and, and coordinating efforts. The department, it consists of myself and one newly part-time, kind of into the training stages. We did hire, named Mr. Aaron Whitehead, he works full-time Chesapeake, he works here about two days a week, roughly. Um, he does a good bit of response and coordinating some things with the fire departments. He is on one of the fire departments and, um, kind of viewed him as, um, an investment in Gates County and, and to someone local to do, um, just to kind of give you a framework, um, to get someone in the fire inspection, all the way to level three, roughly is a five-year program. So, cause the state hasn't, like, you have to be at certain levels for different, different times, so.
Billy's been heavily involved with our radio projects. And we did, did last year, a new repeater system, am I explaining that?
Yes, sir. Uh, so we did, we actually are near the end of that implementation. So our two repeaters down on our tower site, that's equipment that belongs to us. One of them's on the Viper Tower system, which is the highway control radio network system, which we communicate with. Our current ones were outdated to the point we couldn't get them serviced. So we've replaced that, which also has a VHF fire for like the radio pagers for the fire department. And the older VHF repeater that wasn't in use anymore by law enforcement, we have added our own standalone eight-hundred megahertz repeater. So that is, that is a redund, almost a redundancy. If something ever happened to the Viper system statewide, we, as of last week, can switch over and operate on that one channel that we own locally. That's also helped fix, you know, radio interoperability. When we went to eight-hundred, we can no longer commute, hopefully by the end of next week, if they come to assist us, they can switch over to that network. Because it's not on the state system, we can allow them to get on. Yes, that was, that was something, feedback from the fire departments and the nine-one-one center that was an issue. And I think, uh, he's also trying to help us with the sheriff's department in Suffolk to be on the same, same system. So we have that. Thing we have experienced.
When we went through the transition last year for nine-one-one and consolidated with Perquimans County, he was kind of already a person helping facilitate information back and forth with the fire departments, with the sheriff. And we're gonna get an update at your April meeting.
Super excited, wonder.
And I can't say enough about what the folks at Perquimans did to help us. I mean, they are a first-class operation through, through Jonathan and Julie and the whole group, which is fantastic.
They've been amazing.
Really pleased with that, I think. Billy's also helped on a couple of interesting grants. There was the one grant where he picked up the trailer and the lighting systems and.
Yeah, so we have, um, one is the clean capabilities grant. Right now, we have added two roadside signs that you may have seen them out during elections, we get them out a few times. We can actually change those remotely too, that's a nice upgrade. The one that we had at the EOC actually belongs to other more regional health, essentially not ours, so we like have a hard time maintaining it, getting parts and that stuff. So these, these are ours. The second part is what's called the multi-event response trailers, like for parades and stuff. Several counties had got them locally on a different grant, we got them on this grant. It also had the signboards for notification and all the cones and bear case in, in one package that can go out. And that goes out with us, fire department, sheriff's department, utilities that have used it a few times, as well as the light trailers and light towers and stuff like that.
And that project was about ninety or eighty?
Yeah, ninety thousand. We're getting ready to wrap that one up.
Where do you keep that at?
At the EOC. So we're actually fortunate here in Gates, the old prison is the EOC, so it kind of gives us like a yard to maintain. Yeah. So, so we kind of house maintain to make sure the readiness of the equipment, we don't necessarily use all the equipment. Uh, we have changed it to a little bit of self-serve. Uh, Mr. Arnold's come out there and picked up stuff when he needs it after hours, they kind of just check it out by phone and that kind of stuff, so.
When he mentioned board of elections, he's worked within the last couple of years on, on their security with their communication. I think you provide them different.
Yes, yeah, I have some event radios that we can check out for different things. And we issue that to them and then we have set it with the nine-one-one center where they're doing checks. And it, you know, this Gate County doesn't have always the best cell service. So the radios give us. It, it, it's some of these voting home sites have been a security communications, both internally for them and directly to law enforcement or fires.
The understatement of the meeting.
Questions concerning communications, uh, Viper system, communication system. Like you mentioned the fire department, you mentioned the sheriff department. The magistrates, uh, are they still using their personal apparatus, their cell phones to communicate throughout the county?
To my understanding, yes, the magistrate's her on that cellphone call list is the only thing I've ever seen.
So the way it works for the magistrates or the way it worked with our anomalies, and I assume they're still going the same way. And if we have somebody call in that wants to speak to the magistrate, we will typically call the magistrate and then patch it through to them, so we're not having to give out their personal numbers to things, um, to, to different people. So it's not like we're giving their information out to the public. They're being patched into their phone from a third line kind of party. And then they get, they have, they have pagers, so we, they have a call or something like that, they go across the pagers, they get paged out saying they're needed at the office, somebody's there. Well, I think they go right, right there. So they'll, they'll have it that way, but then they typically call into the office and say, you know, what do you have for me, get the information, and then they'll use their contacts. Like I know with magistrate Saunders, he, he's not gonna use his cellphone at home because it don't work, so he will use his home phone when he's trying to communicate at home, because that's one of those dead spots in the county where you just don't, don't have service. So they are using personal devices as of last, within the past year.
Is that gonna change or is it gonna stay, is there more advantage to them having a personal or county or?
I mean, I don't know of any request that they had for any change to it. If, if they would be interested in a request to have a county device, then I would think they would need to present it. But as to date, as far as I know, in the past two and a half years that I've been here, I have not heard a request made of such.
Well, I don't think certainly they want an encrypted radio channel or something that could be set up for, but is a way to do that.
And the radio is very vague. It's a Gates County to magistrate, you have a call.
It's a VHF.
Very, yeah, VHF, but it's very vague. It's not giving anybody's personal information that's transmitted over the phone when they call. So there's no kind of, um, violation of privacy.
So where do you physically sit?
Where do I physically sit?
Yeah, I'm talking about right now.
Where, where the office is?
Yeah.
It's at the EOC, at the, at the old prison.
I suspect as much, but I'm like, I've never been there, so.
You know, man.
No, you should, you should take the tour.
It's a really nice facility.
Go around it, I've been to the UPT, I've been a lot.
We've got a really nice command center.
Yeah, we got the emergency operations center there, which is kind of multipurpose is the way we have it set up. It also gets used as a classroom and a medium approximately the same size it is. We can set up four separate workstations within seconds in there. Uh, there's also a conference room, which has video conferences in it, and then a couple of offices. And also out there, that is, um, animal controls located out there. They're not in the building a lot, they're usually animal calls, but we also, um, are redoing what's called auxiliary communications, which is one of our capability goals this year. Scheduled probably to finish up before July, we're taking part of a state exercise. And that's gonna include things like ham radio operating, I guess is another step in communications. Looking at adding, um, post-hailing, uh, a real need of being equally, have the capability to add satellite communications. As well on the ham communications, we do something called Windlink. So if phone systems, cellphone and everything, well now we can use ham radios to transmit like email data type stuff. Pictures and stuff takes a very long time, but we could communicate directly with the state EOC or something like that. Just another after action we've got at home.
We also have a morgue, one of the few counties in the state that has its own morgue.
Is that just a leftover prison or something?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's the free, it's the free.
I worked at a building more for me years, it was the same thing, had a base that where the restaurant was also had, you walk past the morgues.
Yeah, well, the morgues are always near the kitchens, you know, because they keep the fridge and lights on.
I've been written many times, you know, I have a morgue, again, this place is just.
Hey, so, so one more question just now, because I want to make sure I understand. So for emergency communications, y'all have anything like a sat phone, sat phones that y'all use or?
So we, well, by the end of the years, the state used to have a program, we've never been part of it. So that's why we're adding that, yeah, we don't currently have one. We can request one, but as we found, like from Matthew and Alene and stuff, there's not enough to go around anymore. They're not federally bonded to, um, with Mr. Pierce adding the voiceover IP phones to our office. If we add the capability to have Starlink, at least, not necessarily on a monthly contract, but we have funds to add the equipment. So we know where, you know, we have a kid in.
We, we have a program, but I did a contingency engineering, and for the, we actually had a system set up where we had been paying some crazy amount, like fifty thousand a month for like ten phones to have it just in case. And this has been five years ago, but they had a system set up where you can buy the phone and chip, and you pay a reserve fee, some small amount. And in the case of inclement weather or some other thing, you could call them up and in eight hours they could have you active.
Yes, we're doing, we're doing the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to pay for it.
Right.
Monthly. Yeah, so, so if we know that we're highly likely to turn it off for a month. Chauan County does a similar, similar thing. We also have a, a grant proposed, sent in, this is probably a little bit of it. We should know sometime in May if we get it, it's a security grant, which would have us a disaster network, which would be a case that has both cellular and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we're putting in for that, and that's a, that's a, it's an emergency management grant, but the goal is that if we have something to do down here, it's actually a two-part, we can set up something that the EOC are here, or the mobile EOC, so that's just one of those capable.
You use a whole case of your training people effectively getting confused, and so you know it's not just during the disaster time, you can throw this, it's a good time.
Yeah, our search and rescue team, we just want to currently have, which is just cellular, so.
Billy, if you would describe the grant for the community center of Burdington Shelter.
Getting, getting ready to start that, so another grant that we received was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, it was under shelter, emergency shelters. We're gonna be adding, um, heating and air, and hopefully a generator hookup. We, we didn't get enough to do the generator two this time, we'll put in that for next round. And that's gonna expand our community center to be added to our current shelters, which is important, because we don't really have in our shelter plan, um, a post-storm shelter or what's called a winter shelter. If a disaster happens, right now we use the schools. And you get to a point where you want to open the schools to get life back normal and start recovery, you need to move maybe a smaller part to, to that. And that gives us a bit more, uh, kind of fills those gaps in, in our shelter plans. Sheltering and getting notifications and warnings is probably the two most important things, that I have to assure that happens, and then emergency communications. And the other capital outlay project we're finishing this year is the mobile data terminals. It mirrors the one the sheriff's department does, and it mirrors, um, very similar to Perquimans, EMS and sheriffs use. Same vendors, same equipment, it communicates mostly with the nine-one-one center. So that's gonna be a, a computer system, the emergency vehicles, it'll be every ambulance, every sheriff's car, and each primary fire engine. And that will give us direct communications with each other and the nine-one-one center. You can see who's going where and what, and we can send information privately. And in there, part of that, on our inspections, when we're now doing inspections, we're doing pre-plans for the fire departments, which helps us on our ISO ratings and help if we have to respond. Since we're in the buildings, doing the fire inspections, we're doing the pre-plans too, and that's gonna be loaded. So they go to a building, they can hit one button, they know who, who owns the building, the keys, the exits, the panel boxes, all those kinds of things.
I think that's exciting as well. Pretty, pretty exciting about this.
That and the repeater was extremely wonderful.
Yeah, that, that's the one I feel like we were, we were way behind.
We have a boat out there.
Yes.
And the, uh, Mr. Whitehurst, he just joined us a few months ago, he's, he's apparently fairly handy with boat owners, as I understand it.
Yes.
Boats in general, and he's gonna try to help us get that thing up and off. I can't imagine not having access to a boat in a situation warrants, given the, the water that we've got.
EMS has one small flat bottom boat, which you do not want to be in certain.
Yeah.
Parts.
Yeah, that was, uh, a lot of.
There's a lot of discussion around this, is the best way to put that?
Yeah. We're, we're in the process of adding, adding that capability back to be functioning.
Indecision was, we do have bodies of water that are in and around the county, and it was necessary to have a boat, and there were previous discussions saying otherwise.
Yeah.
So.
And we have recently added a new high water, um, high centering, um, high water like flood rescue truck, which also could be used to hold larger than. Military.
Federal service.
Federal service. So it's, it's not in service yet, the one we had was not, not cost-effective to repair.
So the only boat we have then for emergency purposes, Kansas, is that one? I mean, sheriff, sheriff doesn't have any.
No, no, we're a little unique here. Um, so in North Carolina statute, like the sheriff's in, in charge of any search or.
Right.
On the water, um, except of, of tactical rescue. But most of our waters, it's a search operation. So they come and they're coordinating, they're coordinating, they are in command, but our volunteer search and rescue EMS mostly conducts it. Um, right now, they have one flat bottom boat, which is good for certain rescues, and then this park will kind of cover it, and then we're gonna be looking on adding out of, um, nine-nine, we already have for next year, a, a John boat. Right now, we can borrow, uh, Mr. Lowe's soil and water, has one that we can borrow.
Yeah, we have mutual aid.
We have mutual aid, like with, when it comes to something like in the river here.
Yeah.
We very frequently would just go ahead and contact Chauan County to get them to launch, because they're, they're there, they're right there, they could launch out and get.
So as last month, we changed the water rescue, um, agreement with them, we all met, us and Wildlife and everyone. So if there's an active rescue in that Chauan River, Wetton gets paged automatically and. So we're doing it together. Actually, this and today, they actually also are some of our team for looking for water. So Wetton Fire Department has a boat a lot quicker and easier to get water. And we just switch over to their fire, we have worked out that we switch over to her for, um, fire to speak to them.
If they have a much faster launch, then we could even get it from EOC or anywhere here to, to an input.
Yeah.
I don't know all that.
I could be in one of them, but if you hit about it, the boat, the, right now, would be about sixty grand. And I believe in that.
Yeah, when I saw it, I thought, gosh, we can't let this go.
Right, right, that was the.
When I first started here part-time, it bounced around a little bit.
Like twenty-five hundred dollars. Backside, right?
Yeah. Wouldn't that have been?
Yeah, we, we've al, we've already assessed it, the front, the whole looks, the surface looks great. The motor turns over, we're changing out some fuel lines and stuff like that.
You've been in the fresh fuel.
We have some water rescue equipment in a, a draft action item proposal, so. The regular, all the electronics are in good shape, we bought that one, so we're better than I have been in with other boats in other counties, so.
Really nice boat.
Yeah, we got several capital outlay, um, action items submitted. And we have some projects dog, dog beer for federal grant, in-state grant funding, we don't exactly what that looks like. What we have right now, proposed, uh, over here in May, is two training grants and the disaster network grant. We suspect at least a homeland security grant is a work with the sheriff's department on some mobile cameras that will tie into maybe a camera system they're looking at on funding on their end. So, so we can kind of coordinate those efforts and those projects, especially since our deployable cameras, if we're deployed to something like a shelter site or appointed distribution. I want the sheriff's department to be able to give you them off. It doesn't really want to go to any call, like take that step back, like I'll, I'll set them up in there.
Budget wise, I know we have a separate presentation obviously for EMS here, but where does, where does the budgets for the two right now, this summary you gave, I don't see a separate line item for those.
We have a catch-all, we might not have any special appropriations, is that what we have?
Yeah, that's on the question.
Right here, sure as he can make.
So the one that's listed here under emergency management, that's totally, that's totally just top of our.
I think, the one I saw, Americans also do, we have a lot of capital outlay projects.
Rescue squad is, is the rest, is the rescue squad. Emergency rescue just below the sheriff. Yeah.
So this is.
So.
Rescue squads, they want this nine seventy.
Yeah, we're trying to get, we have this, where's this gonna be, try to go.
So that would be here.
Just, okay.
And we finished the AED project, we now have thirteen AEDs that we have managed to, the supply has been to keep up on. We now have thirteen A E Ds that we have managed to supply hospital to keep upon.
Oh, A E Ds? I I'm.
Yeah, that was, so we we also have an under under kind of prevention harm reduction projects. Worked with sheriff's department, EMS, in the fire with the A E Ds, helping fire plant apply for a grant and oversee now to get some more A E Ds on there. So far, we got four calls where the time the patient got an A D to the patient has been reduced by ten minutes at least for time. So we and and we're kind of unique compared to some other, because socioeconomically, geographically, we're different than law. So we have A E Ds in the deputy's course, they've all gone through the training, did all their training and.
Not in a hospital, I mean, it makes a huge difference.
Our deputies are often the first.
First.
First responder, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's always unique here. I did the same thing when I was in Perlin and and in Camden and we severely reduced the time. Mole and metro areas, they put them on engines, our fire departments come over here. So we got it paged out, come to the station, you know.
And we've talked about locations, maybe even give some of the the waysites. And maybe some of the orders, call trucks, get all these moving around. We've we've spoke about that.
So some of the people are getting their good traction, like the head of the Chauvin.
Look now.
I'd say that. Yes, I'll mention that to you.
Yeah, yeah, they gave it to me on the food list.
They placed it on the menu before too.
As far as the budget, I have several capital outlay projects that are in the draft proposal stage with finance and Mr. Sauer. Some of those include possibly adding a second part-time because it takes so long to train someone. Without what we pay, we're not going to bring in an inspector that's qualified by no means. And I see value of training locals that has events that is to stay in interval counting. And part-time's usually the way to go because you are in the phase when you benefit some things, so.
Mr. Whitehurst, isn't he a firefighter?
He's firefighter, yes. When we did the interview, we actually met several pretty good candidates.
Yeah, those folks with their schedule groups. And his group also handles the county road signs. So you've got to be able to handle that auger and.
Yeah, that's been a little bit of a learning curve. I did not get that in college.
I got this nifty for you, I'm sorry. I got a power auger, but I'm still digging with old postholds myself most of the time.
Yeah, there's several spots where you have to.
So I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, I'm talking about just getting the signs ordered and later.
Oh.
Putting them in is easy.
Yeah, that's what we say, that's not that right to go home.
Yeah, no, the working with the vendor was a bit of a learning curve, what's required and what's not. But some of the other capital outlay action items we have is replacing the outdated drone that we have that we use for search and rescue. Another step for the N D Ts that would add that same capability to the other E M unit and the mobile command trailer. That would give whoever we set it up for an option to.
What is N D Ts?
I'm sorry, mobile data terminal, that's what we.
Okay, all right.
And some of these, so we're also looking at getting some personal protection equipment to supply to all responders for shoreline rescue. That's essentially your P F D and your brother. After action of a couple of events we've had near and around the water, they don't have them. So we're technically at a pretty good risk of someone following in. That's a under cap outlay. We found that if we kind of try to make everyone on the same page, it's easier if we handle, especially with the volunteers, they don't have to to go through the stuff. Looking at adding some equipment to do fire signature training. And that's both for the public and for the fire department and employees. Right now, I have a homemade burn pan when I do that training. And it it would be a lot less liable if if we had an actual manufactured pizza put in. Another thing we had put in is, so the the some of the buildings at the prison sometimes gets used as a warehouse for the multiple departments, but particularly for us, we're building a stock of emergency supplies. And right now, we have an old trailer that's building some warehouses look at and they don't deem it being worth repairing. And we have a project in looking at building like a having a steel building put in there in that place. Like when the sheriff's department got all their equipment for the cages and and like we needed somewhere to put it. And we have like supplies of cots and water and M R's. There were little little open rooms in the building that we have and files and stuff. We've made some room cleaning up, but an actual warehouse where we can get the forklift in and out would help in a, especially a disaster, when I'm trying to get the stuff in and out and we've got stuff donations and stuff coming in. And then just some changes to software licensing. We've added a lot of software and modernizations and there'll be some returns costs for that. To include like the cell data that we're using for the N D Ts. Those are those are probably the the high end. Oh, and a a big one that we, well, one on a big one, it's I think six thousand dollars, are trying to put a gear washer and extractor for all the fire departments to use. Right now, we have some for training talks and they're coming there to do some training. We have, doing our visits with the fire departments, deemed that they do not have a place to wash gear. A lot of these people are washing gear at home. So we've all seen the cancer warnings of of phone, but also of of that, we don't want to take it home.
And use it all detergent.
It's recommended to not.
Yeah, there's some questions about putting it in your home septic system that we think it would be cost effective for us to do one center washing station since there used to be a laundry room out there at the prison that we have a place to put it, that they already have access to, that they can come and wash the gear, dry the gear, instead of them individually having to try to fund one in each station. So I think only one of the six stations has it now. So they're 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 taking that dirty gear, spraying it down and drive it, but then holding it, taking it home, I think, so, which is not best practice. But I think from last year, the number's down, but the is because of the capital outlay project is or for less pricey some of this.
Yeah, not trying to be crippled, but I would love to see those capital outlays and put a summary of those if we could.
Sure, sure.
Go see what those are with this.
You want me to give them the drafts? I have.
But I will say, Tuck Wilder, he's really helped bring Gates County up to twenty percent.
Yeah.
I mean, it really has.
Yeah, like modernize, like modernization of the different systems that have been outdated for decades.
And he he has done wonders with it, I really, with what he has done, Gates County's a safe place. And that's one of our wonderful priorities.
Well, I'm hopeful you allow us in our work plan in this new budget to have a day or half day to work on the emergency operations plan with the board. I think there's some requirements that the board be N E M's certified.
Yes, we're going to be sending that out and our first operation plan has to be updated by September.
Yeah.
There's going to be some drafts going out for Brooklyn very soon.
Pairing a crisis communication plan with that emergency plan, which we had talked about when we were that week, kind of the training that we went to, yeah. The crisis communication plan, the emergency plan of action and training in regard to that with you and the other key players for that, needs to probably be worked into that plan. Because I don't know that Gates County has really had a communication plan for emergencies to the standard that it should be.
So a- after after July, we're going to have what's called also a pace plan. Actually, I have one right now. We're going to test it in that exercise in July and that will be our pace plan. And that's going to be, you know, our primary communications, secondary, you know, those things, both photos and data. I don't know exactly what you also needed for the, what did you call it?
Oh, no, it was, I took notes and I dropped things. We have, what is it, the crisis communication plan, emergency plan of action.
Okay.
Kind of two, two that coincide within the.
Yeah, it's probably under like what we call.
It's it's.
Under the scope, yeah.
It it will follow up once it's up.
Yeah, signals are wanting getting public information out. Getting information to the public and getting the plan to the responders and stakeholders, both the two in four parts.
Billy also manages our code red system. And now we've got Facebook over here that's pushing out some of this information as well.
And we are, through another grant that we received, the equipment that will be rolling out, we'll have some digital information boards, essentially TVs turned sideways. During what we call blue sky days, they're going to run harm reduction messages, recruiting messages and harm reduction recruiting and then like public events, like things to strengthen the community. During the disaster, we can log in, change it, put messages in there. That's kind of gold towards, and and they'll move to the shelter when the shelter's open, but it's kind of gold to help communicate with people that are particularly like may not necessarily have Facebook, you know, that kind of stuff.
The harder.
Particularly, yeah. We have a good bit of that in Gates when I did the getting smoke detectors in people's houses and we got those on a grant. I actually got more response from a paper flyer in the courthouse than I did.
How active engaged are we like in the emergency response plan with the Alamo Memorial Regional Plan? Could we participate in that?
So it actually, three or four weeks ago, I found out they were updating it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
We had a final meeting and I spent three weeks doing the five years of work. So we we are in that, it is turning and we have updated several action items for us.
Yeah, I don't know how much you've gotten interaction with those, but like the utility stuff. I don't know if you document a need, a utility need in your emergency response plan, that actually helps you score better for grants if you doc, but you have to document.
Monday, we added that, maybe Monday?
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah, Monday, we actually added that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other thing that I've been real pleased with, because I've never been to a rodeo. Sheriff invited me.
Yeah.
But but I didn't realize the effort that he puts in in terms of pre-planning for an event that could go bad.
Come up again in five, six weeks.
Yeah. And and the work that he does with nine one one communication. So they know that the location where the ambulances will be based, same thing for the Christmas parade or any other community event. If we're blocking off roads or have, you know, heavy volumes of visitors or traffic, he he puts together the staging plan for what we haven't ever had.
Say you don't have a loud in your emergency response plan for a bull gore, do you?
No, we have it in the truck. We have a bit on the B A to drive.
No.
Did you mean a bull horn like this or?
No.
No.
Over.
That's what you can't.
Yeah, we we go out at the, yeah, we do that emergency action plan, which is the plan to do something, go draw, do different things. And then we also supply some lighting for the parking lot to make it a little safer against swallows and injuries and set up the radio communication channel and stuff like that and some signage. Now, this year, we'll be able to put some signage to help us let people know about the the traffic pattern because when it lets out, it's a law.
It is a law.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Am I staying for the EMS group?
I think you should, yeah.
Because I'm the EMS administrator.
Yeah. All right, everybody, we are going to jump in. Go ahead and let everybody know when you're speaking. It is being recorded, it was an audio recorder, so if you can speak clearly so that it can pick up there. The goal is to have that posted online for anyone that wanted to listen in the community. And so we are moving into our EMS.
First, first I wanted to express a thank you to the commissioners for some programs that you might not realize directly influenced us. For this current board, you bought us radios two or a couple of years ago under the previous E M. Moving communications to a stable place where where there's multiple dispatchers in the room was a phenomenal move. Like like we, in my fifteen years of of being the chief of the organization, we struggled in that aspect of having enough dispatchers. And thank you for for that move. Thank you for adding that eight hundred channel last year, the backup emergency eight hundred channel. That's crucial to our to our doing our job. And then the mobile data tunnel project that's ongoing with Mr. Tuck Wilder. But those are phenomenal things that bring us up to speed from a technology that's been out for twenty plus years and we haven't had it. And and to finally know that that's on the horizon is huge. It's a big, big thank you for doing that. And for him and the former emergency manager, putting those things in his capital outlay project brings us up to to today technology. So I wanted to just express my thank you for that. I was in a meeting similar to this meeting in two thousand and seventeen in this exact same room. And some of the stuff that I'm going to talk about, we talked about them. And and everybody in the room loved the presentation and a week or two later, the public did not love it. Or a percentage of the citizens didn't love it. And we came back to the drawing board and started all over again. So this is the second page of the of my presentation is a funding history, just to to give you a kind of a recap of where it's come from, rescue squad to a paid EMS service, paid paramedic level EMS service in my tenure, since I've been there. Like I said, I was in a similar meeting in two thousand and seventeen in this room. And you'll notice that we made a double jump that year. So we were at about fifty-seven percent unit utilization, running one ambulance at that time. We were stacking a whole lot of calls, people had long wait times. And we were asking for a commitment to put on a second ambulance at that time. And we doubled that money. During that presentation, we talked about some other improvements that needed to be made in EMS based off of our quality assurance programs. And like I said, the public didn't respond well and we went back to the drawing board a few days later and went to the bottom dollar. And that's where we landed at was eight hundred and twelve thousand that year. That's the last time that I did a budget presentation like this. Ever since then, I have been with the county managers individually, me, him, and some of the finance staff each year. Feel free to interrupt me too if you have questions or if I rush.
Actually, just real quickly, because maybe obviously you, it's just not going to be as a newcomer, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen, you're only at twenty-five thousand and you leap up to three hundred and fifty. It seems like at that point, something big happened, like you went to hired staff, no longer volunteers or something.
Right, the volunteers were were had dwindled down to almost nothing. And in six, in two thousand and fifteen, we went to a paramedic level agency. So we upped our our level of care to paramedics and we were paying a paid paramedic to be on shift all of the time.
Got it.
And we were filling a lot of holes where the volunteers had had finally trickled off to to a point that they were gap in coverage and we were having to to cover those costs.
Got it, yeah, a fucking play.
So it's not the rescue squad that that your parents would know or even some of you may remember. It's it isn't the old volunteer day, a person driving a vehicle shows up, throws you in the back of the truck and takes you to the hospital. The evolution of EMS has has dramatically changed from those days. And the scope of practice is is, I would never think that we would be where we are today. Even E M Ts are doing things that that paramedics weren't doing whenever I started. Even EMTs are doing things that that paramedics weren't doing whenever I started twenty years ago. So know that the service, the level of service that's being provided to the citizens. It's it's our goal each day to provide the same level of service in Gates County that you would get in New York City and Los Angeles or anywhere that you are in the world or or should expect. I think that our citizens are due that same level of care and and we teach our people and train our people to that. I I tried to find a meme to throw in here that I saw yesterday afternoon on social media. And one of it uh our directors to the east posted something on their website about train train your people to the level that you would want when they come to your house. And and that's truly something that Michelle and myself and our captains take to heart. And is we want to teach our providers and train them to be the one that's that's going to take care of me whenever they come to my house or take care of me when they come to your house. EMS, as we all know, is a critical is a piece of critical infrastructure. General statute in North Carolina requires the county government to supply EMS services to its citizens. And and I I always have to remind people to look at it that way, that if we don't plan today for fifteen or twenty years from now, we won't be where we need to be. We're we're playing catch up. We've been playing catch up since I've been the chief of the organization. And we'll continue to do that if we don't sit down at the table like this and have planning conversations and talk about where we're going. Because the 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 relationship that we have between a contracted service and the county government. I can't, I can't say I'm going to do this if I don't know that I have the funding to do whatever this is. Um we value that relationship that we have with the county and and we are always working to be good stewards of the taxpayers running and that we we see that. I tell my people all the time, we drive big gigantic white billboards. Don't be stupid. Do dumb things. We got it on your telephone to ring. Because we were doing dumb stuff and we want to continue to be good stewards of of the the partnership that we have with the county. And I feel like we bring a value to to the county government because being a a nonprofit organization, we can do it for probably cheaper than a government system can do it for. And we're we're able to get our workers' comp under the volunteer workers' comp safety fund in North Carolina and and the accounting system can't do that. One of the biggest expenses in a county system EMS organization is workers' comp because we're the highest workers' comp in employees that there are in a government system. So that's one huge benefit is being able to tap into the to VFIS and have that exposure. Our insurance is still under VFIS and we get it at a remarkably discounted rate compared to other organizations around us. But at the same time, we benefit from our partnership. Because in two thousand and fourteen, we formed a partnership with the county where we operate under the county's NPI number or provider number. And we bill like we're a county level agency. That gives us exposure to the Medicaid cost shares that the state does. And it and it gives us some benefits to look like a county agency at the same time that we're a nonprofit organization and we want to continue to to foster that relationship.
Can I, can I ask you a question too?
Yes, sir.
I looked at your slide. Sorry, I I got ahead of myself, but I I want to make sure I wasn't asking a question that you obviously were in the pit. So I, how long, where does it? Friend of mine, lives in Missouri, he tells me, hey, I got into a wreck to my tractor. The ambulance guys had to come to my house. He's out in rural area. I got a bill for twenty six thousand dollars a month later for an ambulance ride. And so he told me that. So I'm sitting here looking at this, I'm thinking, do you guys charge? Are you allowed to charge? Is that?
Not twenty six thousand dollars. I wouldn't be sitting here denying it. I wouldn't charge that much. So we do charge. If we go to a wreck and we don't transport and we get a refusal, there is a a refusal charge. It's a flat two hundred dollars. A lot of wrecks don't get billed because the if the the person that's that we see as the patient or the citizen didn't ask for us. We're coming because somebody go by and saw it.
Yeah.
We don't build those.
Right, that's fair, yeah.
The the refusal billing came into to practice around that same time, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen timeframe. Really as a distractor from the person who calls nine one one and wants us to take their blood pressure. And then they go nowhere and we go back home. And we saw a tremendous reduction in refusal calls once we put that into place. I still have some not so pleasant conversations with people when they get refusal bills. But not as many as I did that first two or three years. So know they wouldn't receive a bill from me for twenty six thousand.
Who manages your money, your intake now? Because I'm looking at the the amount spent and I think, okay, well, somebody's managing that. Is this, that makes me think, is this the dollar amount you spend including revenue you brought in? How much is the county paying versus revenues you collect? You know, if you follow the net.
I do.
And so I'm asking, who's is is William your money manager?
So we have a bookkeeper, a private bookkeeper that that manages our accounting software and an accountant that does that. As far as how it's how we spend money, our board of directors. So the the five board members that you appoint from the citizens of the county. They approve my budget.
Sure.
So I present them a budget that follows an annual budget, not a not a physical budget like the county government does. So mine is January.
So I guess what I'm really asking is this, so for FY twenty four, twenty five million and fifty nine thousand dollars. That's what your your bookkeeper or whatever says the county need to contribute or that's what y'all spend in total?
The the county contributed a million and fifty nine thousand or weal from July first of last year to June thirtieth of this year.
So your expenses could have been higher, but with the revenue you brought in.
They are, they are. And there's there's a there's another attachment besides the presentation that's in there that show that shows you. My budget.
All right, sorry.
So it shows you our budget ver- and then it at the bottom, it breaks it down into quarters following your budget cycle.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
All right.
All right, the next question goes along with that. Sorry, I I this is interesting. So you guys respond out there, car, bad car wreck and this happens. You have to call Nightingale that's called in. What's the interplay with you and you respond in Nightingale?
So if Nightingale comes all the way to the scene, then we can't bill that. If a patient doesn't go in our truck and the truck move, we it's a non-bill.
Most of the time, your haircut, you wear a little bit of smudges.
Right, typically we bill. We're in a unique situation in Gates County. We're forty eight minutes under lights to Norfolk General and Angels. If we leave our building and don't ask the helicopter to come to come to us right then. We can get to the scene, pick up the patient and go to Norfolk before the helicopter can fly here, pick up the patient, go back to Norfolk.
Right.
And so I teach my people, there there's some value added things that the helicopter brings. It has blood instantly and they have what's called RSI or drug assisted innovation. So they have a maneuver they can do to put a person, to paralyze a person and innovate them and breathe for them. And we we currently cannot do that because we can't guarantee two paramedics on an ambulance all the time. So in order to do that skill, the state requires two paramedics are present to do it. And right now, I can't, I can't guarantee that. I'm going to talk to that a little bit later on in the presentation. But those two skills is what the helicopter brings. And truly, the helicopter brings speed. It's what it's supposed to bring. But if they're setting in Norfolk and I don't ask for them until I see the patient. I can put the patient in my truck and drive to Norfolk before they can fly to me and fly back. So a lot of times, we intercept with the helicopter at Suffolk Airport. It's about halfway in their timeline and our timeline. So a whole lot of times, we'll see the truck leaving and we're we probably are going to Suffolk Airport to meet the helicopter to give them the patient. And we would be, we have billable miles for that part of the trip. And then the helicopter, they that's who sends twenty six thousand dollar EMS bills is is heli- the helicopter ride is roughly around that number.
Is it really?
As soon as you get in.
Yeah, I'm a little.
Dare Dare County EMS has their own helicopter. They they fly with two paramedics on there. I would love to.
Drive, drive.
I don't care if you promise me a ride. Once we get there.
So as we all know, in in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, COVID happened and it messed everything up. It really affected the EMS industry. There are roughly six thousand, a little over six thousand paramedics credentialed in the state of North Carolina. And half of those don't work for an EMS agency. That's data that comes right from the Office of EMS. They're working in alternative care settings. So so they're working for dentist's office, they're working for doctors' offices, they're working the ER. I did that. My my five years previous to coming to Gates County, I worked in the ER at Alamo Hospital as a paramedic. As an alternative setting. That has driven the price of EM of of paying EMS workers. When I was in this meeting in two thousand and seventeen, we were talking about the requirement for a bachelor's degree or an associate's degree to be a paramedic. They they backed away from that a little bit because of COVID. But that has driven the cost of what what our providers need to make to justify being in the industry. And then you have crazy things happening that we'll talk about a little bit further into the presentation. But a a lot of people are coming into EMS, getting their credential and quickly leaving the industry for an alternative care setting. The current contract that we have with Gates County that mandates our current staffing is that we provide two ALS ambulances twenty four hours a day, three hundred and sixty five days a year. So around the clock, that those two ambulances equal four full-time employees or people. Two of those are paramedics.
Advanced licensed.
And and so we we maintain that. That's the bare minimum that we'll ever be at. And we maintain that based off the contract that we have with the county. All of our administrative staff are EMS credentialed individuals. So so typically in a in a work week, we can flex to four and even five ambulances based on the time of day and what staff's in the building. For the last twenty four months, we've been staffing a a third ambulance during the daytime from zero six hundred to eighteen hundred that we funded through our revenue stream to cover the non-emergent transports that we do, but also to cover the flex of of high or peak call volume. So we see a higher call volume during the daytime and and we're able to cover those calls. At the same time that we do non-emergent transports to to increase our revenue. So the difference in a nine one one patient and a transport patient, I know I'm getting paid for a transport patient. A nine one one patient, if I go pick them up and they don't have insurance and they don't care what their credit looks like, I'll never ever see a dime for that. So so being able to do transports from the nursing home to dialysis or the nursing home to doctor's appointments or from home to dialysis, that's guaranteed revenue stream that I know is going to come to me. And I'm able to change what my collection percentage is. So we're collecting above eighty five percent and we have been since we started doing those non-emergent transports in the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen timeframe. Uh Mr. Sauer can talk to that. That's something that that RT County get under his leadership whenever he's there.
Which company does your billing?
Collington.
They're the best in the business.
Absolutely, absolutely. They all billers have a little bit to be to be liked. They're they're all a pain in the butt in some way. It's a matter of finding the least pain in the butt one and and Collington is absolute. That's who we've been with since around that same time, two thousand and I think we changed in two thousand and fourteen to Collington. And they do a phenomenal job and and they're not hard to get along with. And they are based right here in North Carolina. So the key to our staffing model, that we're we're in a skeleton skeleton staffing model every day. If I have a crew member call out at six at ten minutes to six tomorrow morning. My captain is immediately behind the power curve. He's got to go. He has to find somebody to replace him. And and that's not traditional practice in our setting. If you go to the city of Suffolk, they can have fifteen call outs tomorrow and they're going to still function because they're overstaffed. We've we've never been in an overstaffed situation since I've been the chief of the organization. Not saying that that's something we need to change right now today, but it definitely needs to be something that that's looked at for the future. And then also, we we brought on in January, a peer support specialist that works twenty hours a week through the opioid settlement funds. You you might remember that that was the the last action that the the former administration took in December to pass that um. What's that? A resolution? To spend those opioid settlement dollars. Um and we have a provider that's that's doing that twenty hours a week. And we actually had our first positive encounter with that provider last week. She was able to to go with the ambulance on a call, engage. It wasn't opioid related, it was a mental health patient and and her training was a was enabled her to to interact with that person and and change the outcome of that call.
That's true.
And and um so that, thank you for that resolution and that continued support. And and we look forward to growing that program and having our first opioid save with it. So the next one is just showing some increased utilization. A lot of people like to say that Gates County's population isn't growing. And it's not. It's actually declined a little bit since I sat here in two thousand and seventeen. But at the same time that it's declined, it's increased in age. So in other words, sure, we've we've dropped down our numbers a little bit. That doesn't mean our call volume's gone down because the age of our citizens has gotten higher. And so therefore, they're using us more often. In two thousand and twenty three, we saw a twenty three percent utilization rate. Whereas this year, the first three months of this year, we've seen a twenty six point seven two percent utilization rate. That's that rate is how often ours trucks are engaged in a call. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump out of line just a little bit real quick and talk about that alarm that just went off. So Michelle started that whenever I started talking and that was twenty minutes. So if you jump forward one, two pages, you'll see the response times by towns in our county. So there are citizens that won't see an ambulance for that long when they call nine one one. This is a, this is a metric that we measure during our peer support or our um performance improvement meetings that were that are mandated by the state that we do every quarter. And it's it's a performance measure. That's critical in EMS because you don't have to be a paramedic, you don't have to be an EMT, you don't have to be a doctor to read a clock. And so so time in EMS is the most critical piece from a public perspective. We're all qualified to read a clock, no matter, no matter who we are. If you jump forward two, two pages, you'll see our current station and that red ring in that map is just six minutes or six miles from our station, which represents approximately a twelve minute response time. So if you live inside that ring, I can typically put an ambulance in your front yard in under twelve minutes. If you live outside of that ring, it it isn't going to happen, as you can see by those times on those on the the page earlier. So that's one of the things that we talked about in two thousand and seventeen was looking at a strategic plan to grow the organization, to build some substations in the county and move some of our ambulances from the center of the county out to the eastern and western extremities of our county. And we presented a a one point five million dollar commitment on the county's part per year to start funding the purchase of land, the building of buildings, the addition of a what would be a third ambulance or a sixth ambulance, a third full-time crew. And like I said, everybody in the room that day loved it and and it was a phenomenal plan. We came up with it. We started doing the math. We worked it into the budget. The budget got presented. My guess is about three percent of the population didn't like the tax increase. And we went back to the drawing board and and bid on or went for the lowest possible number. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. The model of just substation, what that comprised of?
So the the idea is to to put a station somewhere else in the county, like in in the next, the next page it shows. Like in the next, the next page shows three circles. That concept would be putting a station at the light in Sunbury and at the intersection of Gates School Road and 13th in Gate on the eastern side or western side of the county. And putting, moving an ambulance there, staffed, a staffed ambulance there. And so you'd have an ambulance responding from there. You'd have an ambulance responding from our station now at Easton's Crossroads. And then one responded from near the light in Sunbury. That puts us, as you can see, a majority of the population inside of that six-mile radius and makes what's becoming the industry standard was 12 minutes in 2017. Today, if you Google it, it's an eight-minute response time for an ambulance from the time you call 911 to there at your bedside. Rural, you could probably not hit in 12, eight minutes in most rural places in the country. The hometown I grew up in doesn't even have an ambulance 30 miles away. So, but in the city, the industry standard is eight minutes. And that's where the majority of the population of the country is. But that substation concept would be putting ambulances in those communities so that they can respond quickly. Yes, sir.
Right. I guess I was referring not to the location, because I knew we were going to talk about that. As far as the facility, you did mention that one operational ambulance would be at that substation. As far as facility-wise, what would be the difference between that and the main station?
It could be smaller, so it wouldn't cost as much money to build. It doesn't need to hold, house as much equipment. And it really, it would be, the only purpose for it would be to get the ambulance out of the weather and have the crew somewhere to go to sleep or relax when they're not on a call would be the thing. How that would look is for this group to decide. At the current funding model, we'll never do this. We're not putting enough money in the bank. We're operating on a, we're out of money at the end of the year budget. We're not putting anything away. That 1.5 million in 2017 was a seven-year project to fund this idea. So we would be just now seeing it, hadn't had it been funded back then. We'll never, ever be able to do this the way that we're currently operating. An idea would be if the county owned those buildings and they were big enough to put fire trucks in them, then you could change your fire districts. You could change, you could affect people's insurances by changing and shifting your fire districts. There's a lot of citizens in the county that don't live inside of a fire district and they have the highest possible insurance. That's an option. Something that we did, we did do between 17 and today is we bought a lot of Easton's Crossroads next to our building for the purpose of someday being able to build a bigger building. I've had the conversation with fire chiefs that butt up to that corner that if I built a big enough building, there was a bay there for you to put a fire truck in, would you consider doing it? That in itself changes fire districts, which changes insurance for citizens. That's a valuable conversation to be had that nobody's having because nobody's saying, let's have this conversation. So if we were to build a new building today, that would be high on my list is to build a fifth bay that's rated at enough weight concrete wise to hold a fire truck so that I can make that offer to the fire departments to change the fire district lines and add that value to the citizens. So if this were something that the commissioners are interested in doing and looking at for the future, it's going to take some planning. I couldn't begin to tell you what it would cost to build a building right now today. I haven't done that much research on it. But if we were to move toward this concept, my recommendation would be to go to at least three staffed trucks. Because if you just moved my two trucks, now you just, all you did was change the problem. You moved the response time at Gatesville to 20 minutes and the response times to Corby, Sunbury, Hobbsville, Gates of York to eight minutes. Whereas if you staffed three trucks and moved two, you've equally distributed the ambulances across the county and you decreased that response time. And like I said, that's the one that I focused on because that's the one that everyone understands. No matter who you're talking to, they can tell you what time, what time looks like. Other big-ticket items and things that are on the horizon or that are important to us is we're not competitive in pay with the region. I could show you the Wakes and the Dairs, but I'm not them. I'm the Pasquotank, not even really the Pasquotank. I'm the Perquimmons', the Camden's, the Cho'wans'. That's the level of call volume that we have. And that's what I'm going to show you on the next page when, once we get through it. But other, other big-ticket items is that blood and RSI, putting that second paramedic on the scene. I'm not at a call volume today to tell you, we need to staff three trucks today. We're headed that way, but we're not there. If we were to get our captains off of the ambulance and go from four full-time people per shift to five full-time people per shift, it gives us the ability to start looking at investigating the option of RSI and putting that second paramedic on the scene. And it gives us a credentialed person who could flex to three ambulances 24 hours a day. Because whoever's in the driver's seat of the ambulance doesn't matter if the paramedic's in the back of the ambulance. So right now, at 6 o'clock, that third truck goes home. At 8 o'clock tonight, we get busy and both ambulances go on a call. That person that calls 911 third is waiting on an ambulance to come from. Hartford County, Cho'wans', Perquimmons', Pasquotank, if they have a truck to send.
How often does that happen?
I'd say about one and a half to two times a week.
And it's over 20 minutes?
Yeah. And we didn't do that for years and years and years. We didn't call each way. One option was they just wait. Another thing is you can't do it for too long before somebody's going to come stand on somebody's desk. And they're going to start at Mr. Sauer's office. But at some point in time, the city of Suffolk is going to come and say, hey, we're responding way too often in your county. I got a call last week from the fire chief in Gates wanting to know why Suffolk Firetruck just went down his street. I was like, because there's a cardiac arrest and I don't have no more ambulances. And that's what the city of Suffolk sends is a fire truck and an ambulance. So.
It also keeps you away from minimum staffing. If someone had to leave or got hurt immediately, the truck's on that service, right? To bring the captain off the truck.
Yes, absolutely. That, right. If we, what he just said, if we go to a fifth provider, you're not behind the eight ball first thing in the morning if somebody calls out. You're able to shift the captain over to the truck and keep on getting it without a problem.
There's also someone there to take care of the crew. Properly trained captain, EMS captain can look the burn eye out, assure quality assurance of care, handle complaints and stuff. If you're looking at it, it's a company level officer. I don't probably know.
Taking care of the crew is a huge benefit. Right now, if we have a critical call, we do the best we can. Hopefully, there's an admin staff that can jump on the truck and give that person a little bit of time to gather themselves. But really, most days, it's the old school suck it up, must go on the next call. That would be huge. Sometimes you have a call that just needs three people. The captain would be able to do that. There's lots of benefits to it, but it also comes with a price tag. We have an ambulance fleet that is aging. So whenever I inherited the fleet, it was in bad, bad, bad shape. Mr. Bagley that's on our board can attest to that. He was the shop that took care of my trucks and tried to keep trucks running and on the road. We had a great plan for fleet replacement. COVID happened, prices skyrocketed. And today, if I want a brand-new ambulance, it's 18 to 24 months. If I call right now on the phone and say, I just wrecked a truck, I need to buy a new one, I won't get it for 18 to 24 months.
I'd like to say a little something now. I have some data with me, and I don't know if y'all got it or not, showing the mileage of the existing ambulances. We did have one with 319,000 miles that has been sent to be refitted. And they're going to take the box off and put it on another chassis. And sometimes you can do that, sometimes you can't. But there's four more in the fleet. The lowest mileage one is 143,000 miles. The highest mileage one is, and this was February's numbers, 257,000 miles. We had gone from diesel trucks to gasoline trucks, not knowing exactly what to expect. But they've done really well. But the diesel truck that is now being outfitted, refitted, had 319,000 miles. So you've got three existing ambulances, gasoline engines, that have over 200,000 miles, over 250,000 miles. There was a time years ago when this county had one ambulance that would run. The rest of them were in shops, various shops. And one of them was in mine, one was at Ford Place in Leavitt. I don't even remember where they all were. But this county got down to one running ambulance. And we don't need to be there. We don't need to be there. So, you know, with these that have got 250,000 miles and it takes a year to get another one going, I do think that we need to have a plan to go ahead and get one on order very shortly because we're still going to have two with not far behind over 250,000 miles.
If I can add to this, the re-chassis-ing, whatever you call it, rebound, can only, is recommended only happen one time per box. And so that's not always an option going forward. Like you mentioned, it's happening now, but that would be it for that truck, which is kind of where we're at.
So what does a new ambulance cost? Around $250,000 with everything, with the equipment that goes in.
What size chassis do you own?
We've been using E450 cutaways. There's.
You need to have your chassis.
They're squabbling, then E450 cutaways are going away. That they're not, there's talk in the industry that Ford's not going to build them anymore. But then I called an ambulance manufacturer and they said, oh yeah, we've got plenty. I've got them sitting on my lot. So there is talk of them going away. I would love to be on a pickup chassis, which is considered a type one ambulance. Right now, we're on a van cutaway chassis. I would love to be on a pickup chassis. It's easier maintenance, it's a smoother ride.
The suspension holds up longer.
The suspension holds up longer. Everything is better. The problem is, I can't park two of them nose-to-tail in my building. My building was built before they existed and two of them won't fit. I would immediately have a parking problem if I was to buy one today because I can't park anything nose-to-tail with it. But absolutely, that would be on my radar had I had the space. Other things that are on, big-ticket items that are on our radar is our cardiac monitors. We're right around seven years right now. A new cardiac monitor, one today is $55,000. When we bought those in 2018, the plan was that we would have them for 10 years. And that's still the plan, kind of, because we bought those in a group, a regional purchase program in 2018. So Dare, us, Camden, or not Camden, Currituck, and maybe Pasquotank bought a couple. So we bought a bunch. So all of us got together and we brought that price down tremendously. We have a meeting next week with Striker or Physio to look at the new cardiac monitor that they have out. Dare is poised to buy all new cardiac monitors three years early because they have Dare money. They've gotten other counties to jump in with them. And so they're going to buy that group thing again. In order for me to take the benefit of getting that reduction in price, I either have to go early and jump on board with them and finance that purchase or I say, no, I'm not going to do it. And then in two years, when my cardiac monitors aren't supported no more, we're going to go to the table and.
What's the cost savings?
What's the, yeah.
So in 2017, when we bought them, they were going for $35,000 and we saved about $6,000 per monitor by buying during that group sale. I'll have an idea dead on next week because that's one of the things that she's going to do when she's there at our station to show us the monitor is also talk about what that savings can be. If I was to just buy one today, I know that price tag is $55,000. I can't tell you for sure that that's what it will be, that my savings would be that great this time or not. If it is, then what do I do? I pull the trigger and jump on it? And if so, then my only option is I'm going to finance that. That's what we did before was we purchased them in the group purchase. It's the best way to buy them because they warranty them longer. So the warranty's two years. If you finance it through them for five, they automatically extend the warranty to five years and they do all the maintenance. So that's what we would do, but that's a trigger that I might have to pull.
And they'll swap out if they can't fix it right away.
Right, they'll swap out, they do technology upgrades, they'll buy back my cardiac monitors that I have that they know aren't, they're not going to support anymore in two years. They'll give us some money for those as a trade-in. And then the last two things that I had on the, on the future planning, big-ticket items is a building, the building that we're in currently was built in 2003. If you told me today, here's the money, hire another full crew, I would say, okay, I got to build a building because I have to sleep those people somewhere. And the problem is, I can't sleep a guy and a girl in the same bedroom and lay down at night knowing that I'm the one, the right thing is their leader. And so I would immediately have a sleeping problem if you told me today, here's the money for another, a whole other crew.
I can essentially look at the change in 20 years and then.
So that's something that's got to be on the radar. And then if we were to entertain the idea of addressing that response time issue that we currently have and building substations, I don't know, we'd have to find land, we'd have to talk about the cost of the building, and I don't know what that would look like. So the big elephant in the room is, last year, whenever I met with Mr. Sauer and his team, I asked for $1,238,32. Where did I get that number from? I participate in the Northeastern North Carolina EMS Administrators Group and we share information. This means a little bit early for that shared information, but I had an idea of what was coming from in July. And that's what you see in those little bitty prints. They're really, really hard to read. So I gave them to you as a full-size copy in your brochure so that you can see them blown up. I had an idea during that meeting with Mr. Sauer's staff that what those counties were going to do around me. And I had a huge concern about Camden County because I'd heard their county manager say that we are going to have the best EMS agency in Northeastern North Carolina. And I want Joe to have a list of people that want to come to work for him. And they've done that. They're going to have a call volume littler than us because they have a population about our size, but 20 years younger. It's a bedroom community to Hampton Roads, that's who lives there. But they're paying like they're a Currituck or a Dare. And that, it sent a ripple through the region. Cho'wans', RTI and Perquimmons' echoed it at their budget time. That's going to send a new ripple. So we're looking at 24, 25 numbers on these flyers. They're going to do something in '25, '26. So if we give our people a 12% pay raise this year, all we're doing is coming up to where they were last year. I haven't seen attrition caused by Camden coming online primarily because the chief of the organization is my good friend. the chief of the organization is my good friend, and he didn't recruit in my sandbox like he did in Currituck, Dares, Pasquotanks, and Proquemans. He stayed out of mine. I have two people that are employed with me that work for him part-time. Other than that, I did not lose anyone, but that's because of a relationship that I maintain. He was my deputy chief, the position that Michelle has, he was my deputy chief ten years ago, when we took the agency paralegal. So I don't have a bottom line ask today of what my number needs to look like going into the budget. I would say that at the very minimum, it'd be that, what the same thing that I asked last year. I feel like there's enough money in that number to account for what the pay raises will be in these four counties, in their budgets, whenever they come out in July. I could be wrong, or I could be spot-on, but if that's the only thing that I asked for, then that's, then we're doing what we've always done. We're gonna work at the minimum staffing, we're not addressing the skeleton crew, and there's no planning for what EMS looks like in the future.
I've only had the privilege of doing two budgets in Gates County. The first one was an absolute fire grid. And when I had my initial meeting, it was stormy, and he laid out some of the history. I learned more tonight than I did in that initial presentation. But when we got down to the number, because he was asking for about a hundred and sixteen thousand more than the nine seventy fours, I recall, and the comment he made was, "Y'all really have a problem with your nine-one-one center." And if taking this hundred and sixteen thousand that I've asked for will help stabilize the nine-one-one communications center, he said, "Just pull my number off the books." Well, I took him at his word, because we were straight to put this thing together. When he came in this past year, the request was a bigger number, I don't recall what it was, and what I did was take the number you'd asked for a year before, and so that million fifty-nine thousand is more than twelve months out of date. I'll just say, having served in a number of counties that have had to fight this battle, serving people and living in a county without a hospital, the biggest blessing you can bring in is first quality, paramedic-level care that can get to them in that golden There are a number of ways to tackle this, and I'm gonna just say it, the fact that this conversation is dovetailing, when the county commissioners are looking at a revaluation here, gives y'all some flexibility. And I know this is tough to say, but dag on it, when it's, you know, we all heard about the fellow killed on the tractor in Chauan Camden, all the ambulances in the world weren't gonna help him, but it sure makes the family feel good when they got to the scene in a reasonable amount of time. There is a report put out by the Department of Revenue that shows every tax rate in every county, and a lot of counties have multiple tax rates. They have their municipal tax rates, we only have one municipality. They have service districts for schools, downtown redevelopment tax districts, they have fire districts for the various fire departments, some places have a service district for the whole county for fire, and there are a handful or more that have an EMS tax, like a fire tax. The one I'm most familiar with is down in Pender County, I think theirs is about nine and a half cents. Whatever the number would work out to be, and I know folks like to compare tax rates with all the other counties, well, when they're, when the association puts out its list of the hundred counties and what their tax rate is, they never show you the fire tax, the separate school tax, the downtown redevelopment tax, the fire district tax. All they say is that one adult road tax for the general file. If y'all have any notion at all with looking at this, and I know, we and I would be happy to dive in at whatever instruction y'all wanna give at whatever time, but...
I have personal say, and I said this in our meeting with the EMS board, what, in February, there are very few reasons for me to say, "You need to put more money into it again, let's see where we can try." One is education, and the other is public safety, which includes rescue, sheriff, and fire. Those are the three services that we provide that are invaluable, like, we cannot not have it. You look at, we talk about the time, if you're looking at a twenty-minute response time, ten to fifteen minutes long scene sometimes, because you have to work the scene, have to get the patient loaded, have to get the things, you're looking at a half-hour transport. You hear this golden hour thing in the medical field all the time, you're at your hour before you get to the hospital. I mean, because not only is it the time there, there's, you have the minutes before it gets, you know, before they get paged, the initial information to get the page out, takes, feels like hours sometimes to get that information out of somebody on the phone. It could be a minute, it could be four or five if you don't have a cooperative caller. So you're adding to that time. I mean, rescue has kind of, in my opinion, always gotten a little bit of the short end of the stick and the leftover in the public safety field in Gates County. And I think it's pretty sad, because when you need them, you need them. And it's not something you can look back and say, "Oh, I wish I had them." And then when we were in there, and he was saying that he had given this presentation seven years ago, and looking at where we could be now if we had planned ahead, looking at the fact that we could circle, move those circles and cover the county now, had we done this seven years ago, I would hate to see any kind of plan get pushed out another seven years. Not saying that you can take everything and make it all happen, you know, we can make it all happen right now, but I do think the conversation needs to happen, and numbers need to be played with some, and we need to see what we can do in this area.
So this is what I would like to say, and I don't think it would be that hard, but what will it take to squeak by like we've been squeaking by? What will it take to get our salaries about where they need to be? And then what would it take for the new ambulances and the other crew that you need? That's the three numbers I would like to say. Because we're, it's right. So one reason we moved communications is because I could not tell you that somebody was gonna answer the phone when you called nine-one-one. And I could put ten ambulances on, and there still might be a chance that I'm not gonna be able to send one to you. But every step we take to get a little bit closer to that not happening, and having a call each other once or twice a week, they tell me we need a little bit more. And I'm sure there will be a time if we put three people off, we would even neutralize steel. But each step that we can get a little bit closer, one of our sole responsibilities, as commissioners, are public health and safety, we even formed a committee for. And we've talked about this stuff in committee. And yeah, I would like to see those numbers, and see what we can do to get close to them, or what we can, what plan we would have to do to make them come to fruition. We got an excellent money man down there, and who knows what kind of grants we can get as well. So I would like to see what it would take to squeak by, what it would take for the raises that you need to keep the people that we have, and what it would take to put a new ambulance on one another.
And going forward too, with Martin's budget thing, at least, and the plant, like the emergency plan that's coming on, we have to think about these trucks that are getting ready to, to need some updating, and then the, assuming that they don't happen with this cost sharing thing, the cardiac monitors that are coming up. And that's kind of where I come to, and I think, and I know you and I have talked about it previously, this radio situation that just got handled, which was phenomenal, but they should have been on a plan to trade out so many years, so many years to plant. These are things that you know you're gonna need, these are things that you know you're gonna have to have going forward, and you pretty much know a basic lifespan for most things. And there hasn't been any kind of planning, it's been, "Okay, what do we need, let's see what we can do." And that's a problem.
I can answer Mr. Craddock's questions. To squeak by, to do what we're doing, is what we were allocated last year, which is one million, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. I can go tell my staff they're not getting a pay raise, and I think I can make it a year or two, or at least maybe two. I might use a couple people, but that's squeaking by, because that's what we've been doing. To come up to competitive salaries in the region with the counties our size, I need a million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars. That causes the pay increase to where we're competitive with the things that I showed you here. To add a fourth or a fifth member to each shift, which is hiring four new full-time people, to get my captain off the truck, to give me the ability to flex to three trucks at nighttime, and take care of my crew a little bit better, I need a million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly to do that. If you sell me you're only gonna address the fourth crew person, you have to address the pay, because I've gotten less than five applications in the last twelve months, because they don't wanna come to work here. I've lost a person before for fifty cents. They drove right by my station to go to work every fourth, for fifty cents. They spent more money in gas if you sit down and do the math. But they don't care, these young kids don't wanna talk about that. I have a richer healthcare plan than Pasquotank County's healthcare plan, because I have a private, we cross a blue shield plan that I provide my people. They don't care. That matters to me at fifty, it don't matter to me.
Especially the entry level. If we could bring up that as well, they are younger people which are seeking that, because what you were talking about, they're phasing out faster, like, the years of service is scaling down from, I forget, what you said, was it twelve to seven or something? Something like that. People that were spending twelve years in this field aren't dropping back to like seven, and they're leaving. So we're trying to cycle what we have and trying to keep what you can.
And a new truck would be around two fifty.
We had the conversation in 2017 about what Mr. Sauer talked about. Under General Statute 153A, 301, we could form an EMS tax district. It would be our whole county would be the service area, and you can assess a tax directly for EMS. They chose not to go that route in seventeen, I don't know why, I don't know that I'm for or against that idea, but that option is on the table and was there. A lot of conversation, I haven't done the math on this recently, but a lot of our conversation in seventeen, they were raising the trash fee to twenty dollars a household, or whatever it is today, I don't think it's going up against this. That year, a person paid more money to be able to haul their trash to a site, not somebody pick it up, haul it to a site and dump it in a trash can, than they would pay for an ambulance to come to their house when they called nine-one-one. And that, to me, was like mind-blowing, I couldn't wrap my head around why the citizens responded the way they did the ones that did, knowing that they were paying more to haul their trash off than they were to know that an ambulance is coming whenever we're asked, or when they call nine-one-one.
Two fifty is what he accounted for for an ambulance.
Yeah, those are kind of lined out in there, that's a big number, it's not a crunched math, just asking if you were gonna add an ambulance.
And there is financing available from USDA, or available for ambulances, I think they only go seven years, but when you've got a squad of ambulances that need to be looked at, that's an option. It all costs money, but there are strategies that y'all could employ to get whatever objective you want.
Something that hurts us as an organization for grants is fire is not in our name. Everywhere else in the United States, fire and EMS are together. In North Carolina, most of the places, they're not. And so federal dollars, FEMA has a grant that they give every year. I can apply for three percent of what that grant is, because I don't have fire in my Don Davis is looking at buying Camden an ambulance, because they need a fourth ambulance, because right now, they have three trucks, they run them every day, there's no plan for maintenance. So they went to Don Davis and said, "Hey, we need a fourth truck as a reserve truck." And he's gonna find money somewhere in Washington DC to give them, not a grant, an appropriation to buy that. I think that those things are out there, I just don't mingle with the people that have the ability to do that.
Now, if you could get them to buy us one, and you take that two fifty and put you a substation or something like that.
I do wanna ask Commissioner Rountree, Commissioner Pliss, do y'all have any?
Yeah, I also have to say, listen, there's no way anything I'm gonna say is gonna come across wrong, because I totally value what you do, I get it, the eight-minute response time seems like fifteen hours when you're the person waiting for it. I get that real dude, my sister-in-law's ENT in Virginia, and so I hear her stories about all the time, so anything I say is gonna come across wrong, but when we start talking about adjusting salaries, the first thing that comes on my mind is, it's okay, that number you're asking us, if we're gonna bump up salaries ten percent, fifteen, twenty percent, whatever, are you gonna adjust the cost you're asking, requesting, is that built into what you're asking us for? In other words, the cost of getting picked up, are you gonna increase that by twenty percent? We pay twenty percent for our part of it, and they're gonna be billed an extra twenty percent, or is the full cost of the salary increase gonna be on account?
The federal government tells me what I can bill. Medicare issues a building schedule that they will pay, and you can bill twenty-six thousand, like your friend, Medicare says it's only worth seven, you're getting seven.
So if you couldn't pick me up, the same thing?
Right. My schedule is, our schedule is thirty percent higher than the Medicare-approved schedule, because Collington knows that Medicare's gonna knock thirty percent off right away, always. So that thirty percent knocks off of my schedule and brings me to their allowed fee. And so we're closer to where they're gonna pay us right away, if that makes sense to you. And that comes out every year, at the beginning of the year, and we adjust according to that.
This is a general statement, the up or down of this stands on itself, it's an American, I'll be honest with you, it annoys me to hear, "Oh, it's a revaluation year." That really set me off, my blood pressure went up when I heard that. This should stand or fall on the basis of the value it provides to the community and the value. Revaluation year, that should never come into why we're willing to fund some, because we happen to be able to scarf up extra money on the tax year. That's got my blood pressure up, sitting here, I've been sitting here and gotten irritated more and more. I think your program's right, I think the idea of getting several stations is right. I would have liked to see something that outlined to me what the cost of building a station in some areas out of land, we estimate twenty-five thousand dollars, we estimate this, whatever, and have a real number, have your board say, "Yeah, we support this," and come to us and say, "Here's what we're asking for." And then, I think I remember hearing at some point, two hundred thousand dollars extra cost in our budget, a quidst two cent tax increase previous to the revaluation. I'd love to know that, so we can put a specific price of what it's gonna cost the taxpayer to do this. There's nothing in here that's wrong, or anybody could argue with, there's nothing, there's nothing here, nothing that I would say is absolutely, totally unpalatable. Getting a new truck, driving a truck that's got three hundred thousand miles, I'd hate for my loved one to be in a ride to the hospital in a truck that's about to blow up. Nobody's arguing that.
Your point of wanting the more in-depth information in those numbers is why we wanted to start the budget process earlier, so we can have this, and we can ask for those things, and have time to review it.
So the thing is, this is for me, so for salary, salary seems like absolutely something you need to do, you gotta be able to have people to do it, okay? That's the first priority in my mind, and I'm just one person here, I know I'm usually the outlier, but the salary in my mind is absolutely first priority. The purchase of a truck is the second priority, your captain seems to be a third priority, and then the longer term... And then the longer term of building facilities, paying for that all in one year.
Yeah, I'm not asking.
What I'm saying is, is even going into debt for that, if you talk about doing that, I'm very conscious about taking on any more debt. And so if we were to do that, I almost want to say that, hey, somehow we build it, build the cost gradually with the intention of maybe building a first station in four years or something, and have a legitimate plan. But otherwise, I mean, I know I come across as a horse as you know what right now. I get it, I'm willing to suffer though because I feel like we need to be more open about it. And this should stand or fall on its own value, and I think it stands on its own value. It shouldn't be about, because we can have to harvest more money this year. That's, I'll shut up at that point.
My priorities are very similar to what you just said. Absolutely, we have to do something about pay.
Yeah. You can't keep people.
Or the next conversation that we're going to have is me telling the emergency manager, hey, I'm getting ready to go down below what I tell you as I'm in on.
As an argument, if I'm telling somebody in the public why I'm supporting this and why I want to do this, what does it cost, does it do cost Suffolk in that? Who, it's got to cost more money, they're driving an extra 15, 20?
They're not charging Gates County anything for doing it. The citizen is going to pay, you know, transfer fee, but it's based on the miles, the loaded miles, that the federal government controls that. So the citizen is going to have a cost. The biggest thing is the time. If it takes us 20 minutes to get there, you're adding at a minimum of 10 minutes to get from Waleyville, if that truck is in Waleyville, to come. That's where my comment comes from about somebody standing on Mr. Sauer's desk. Right now, the city's not going to say nothing if they come once a week, I don't think. But at some point in time, somebody's going to say, why are we going to Gates County so often? I don't know what that number is, and I don't know that anybody knows what that number is before somebody's going to come down here and say, hey, y'all need to do something.
25 years ago, I had a discussion with the mayor of Suffolk here because my wife and kids were in a head-on collision from my house on 32 of the state line. And I called Gates County, back then, this was in, God, this would have been 98? And to be honest with you, I called, and I'd be able to thought better of it. I called Suffolk's 911, and they responded until the ambulance got there. Y'all were volunteer, and you're further away, I think, from where y'all are than they were. And they responded, but later, the mayor, who I went to hospital with, was giving me all grades of crap about it, and telling me that he didn't want his people really going across the state line, et cetera, et cetera. And I remember asking him at the time why they do it, he says, it's emergency services. What are you going to do, you're going to respond? And so that weighs into my mind, and yeah, we don't want to have to call them. They're going to show up, but do we want to be the guys that are always the poor kid on the block asking if they show up? So support everything you do. I feel bad for being irritated, and I hope you don't take it at all, but it's you.
And I will say that I think one of our saving graces is that we do have so many points of mutual aid around us, it's not all, you know, we have Suffolk, that's picked on. Like Hurtford, like being able to spread it out a bit makes it not seem like we're calling the same people all the time.
Now, some of those other counties have told us they can't guarantee.
Right, right, right.
They have it's bad for these people.
Because they have, I mean, they're, yeah.
Somebody in the year called me just a couple of years ago, they said, I hope they don't call Hurtford because I don't want to go to the rural next town hospital.
So that is also another.
I was going to say.
If Suffolk comes, they can't go anywhere. They have to go back to Virginia, that's all. They're Virginia provincial people. They have to have one end of their trip in their state. Hurtford's not coming, they're in a worse situation.
Hurtford is not coming to anything.
It probably would be worth my time to go bid on their service and provide their service. That's how bad of shape they're in. So they're not coming. They have one truck most days and run four times the amount of calls we run.
And a VLS is going to look up.
Perquimmons is probably coming. Perquimmons is coming if we call them. Pasquotank, they're downsizing. Because of the Camden split, and I don't know what the future's going to look like for that. And they're a long ways away. And they're getting ready to move further away because they're moving their station at the hospital to the new hospital. And that's a further drive, once they do that move. We, our saving grace is Suffolk. It's a municipal fire department. If the Waleyville truck is on a call, the truck from downtown moves down to the airport, to backfield, and so that truck would come to us a little bit further away with it. Come, that's how those systems operate. They're not skeleton crews, like I said. They're able to move trucks around in backfields, areas, and we're going to get a truck when we call Suffolk. It might be a few more minutes, but they're coming. They came last week to a really bad accident we had on 13 just across the state line in North Carolina, and they helped us. When I joined the organization, they went across that line. Like literally, I had, I responded to a heart attack at the end of, I think it's Corpi Road, right there near the Corpi gas station. I responded alone on a third crew call of a cardiac arrest, and they called Suffolk. And that truck stepped at the church and waited for me alone to put that patient in the truck and haul them up to the church because they were not coming across the line. So the very, very first thing I started doing was establishing a relationship with the chief of that department to change that. And like I said last week, they sent a fire truck down the middle of Gates, Gates, to a cardiac arrest call because we knocked that wall down. But we just can't, we can't continue to play in it.
Right, can't take advantage of it.
I'll be brief, but I'm in agreement, the needs that we have to address for our staff and for our mobile equipment, and even the future infrastructure is a great need. And I know we're going to have to get there incrementally because it's a big, long task to do. But it's something that needs to be done, and I believe we should look at the option of the tax increase, but it's taxed exclusively for EMS, you know, it's a need, and it's an investment, and it's a great investment in the lives of our citizens. So I'm in total agreement with the presentation, it's a need, and it needs to be addressed, not can't kick down the road, like the chair said earlier. Because when the cans kick down the road, it's going to incur more costs, you know, over time. It's best to address it now, get a start on it, so we can address the problem promptly. Well, in a way where we can handle it fiscally. Yes, that's all I have to say.
I would like to say one thing, and I'm here for the EMS, but would there be such a thing as to investigate what it would cost to start out with one substation just expensive? You know, what is this going to cost? I know you don't know for sure what piece of property is going to cost until you're ready to go buy it and, you know, prices change. But what the building and the facility would cost, and then further into it, see is there possibly a grant available to do something like that? I mean, other than someone's time, it's going to cost somebody's time at this point to do this. That's what it's going to cost, and you know, you probably have to have a separate committee to investigate that, I don't know. But at least it would be putting a foot forward in the right direction, in my opinion.
Yeah, I wouldn't have issued that at all.
Here's Sunbury, I can give them to give us the old fire department, it's got two bays, doesn't it?
We would not waive Hobbs Ball, that's the music guy in there.
Does he really?
Yeah, sure does.
They don't own it anymore. They don't own it anymore, so.
Wade what now?
Wade Castle Ball, yeah. And then they play music down there Thursday or Friday night.
Y'all got some happening stuff there, y'all got a coffee shop too coming up?
Yeah, we got one.
I'm speaking way out of turn for Sunbury, but there's a really nice fire station that could have some slight modifications and have living quarters. And you don't have to build it, that's right there, that's close enough to that intersection to call it at that intersection.
And then we're down to one in a modified building.
But that's not having had a conversation with those members and that board. But that's, there's potentially a substation already set. He housed the truck there for years.
I know he did because I used to go down there and get them serviced. The property would be big enough to even add a separate quarters to it, you know. I'm just saying, I think it's time to at least start checking into it, to the kicking the can down there.
Well, Mr. Craddock, I mean.
You owe something, people don't call me Mr. Craddock.
So I'm new at this, but I'm just thinking, wouldn't your board do that though?
I don't want it.
Your board should look at that and tell us here's what we want you to do.
I would say y'all investigate.
Well, I think we've got to work together because it's the county that's mandated to have this service. We're just fortunate that we've got a local nonprofit that's willing to do it so the county's not shouldering the whole thing. And again, I apologize for my finiger, but if we were to go with the tax, the separate tax for EMS, for that county-wide service district, we pull those costs, and right now it's over a million dollars, pull that out of the general fund tax levy, that's going to help us at revaluation. That's going to lower the burden of carrying the general fund. I mean, just don't let revaluation, have you read something on Facebook about revaluation? Just help us all understand.
I mean, honestly, that's a big thing, would you want to read it?
But revaluation can actually, this exercise could help the board ease the pain of revaluation. If you can isolate the cost of this new expanded, or I won't say this, this expanded service capacity. I mean, revaluation is something we're required to do. This can give the board some flexibility as you address all the different challenges. I'm not saying revaluation is time to screw the taxpayer. I'm saying you have some flexibility, you have some tools, and I think this whole group is to be commended for having the dialogue, and I think we're all in this together and can find a path forward.
I got a black eye in 2019 when the cost leveled because they raised the taxes four cents and they blamed it on EMS.
That's what's going to happen here.
And I can tell you.
No matter what's said, that's what's going to happen.
And I can tell you that when we said we were doing this, at first I was like, I don't want to do that again. I lived a bad time in my life. I lost good friends that think that we got a pay raise and they didn't get a pay raise. And I don't talk to them still today because the, because I, the commissioners blamed the tax increase on EMS, and it was not my, I asked for one penny more, if you look at the end of the day, not four, one is what you gave me, and I got a black eye for that. I wasn't a big fan of coming here tonight because I haven't had to do it, and I don't want to relive that moment in my life again, but I guess it's the burden of command, so I get to be.
Most of what I think if you, like I said, if your board goes and does an assessment and says, here's a way we'd like to get it forward, and they come forward and say, here's our plan, or here's possible plans, so we can estimate your cost, and collecting revenue over this number of years, that seems like a viable plan for a big expenditure versus us even remotely talking about something that big during the evaluation year. I would even say it's better at the end of the year if we really talk about, oh, we got this big fund balance. I'd say dealing with it that way would be better than the year, and say, hey, look, all we did was underspend by 10% or 8% or whatever, and it's going to result in this addition to the fund balance, that'd be the time to deal with it right then. But not to say it's part of a normal budget year, and we're going to use this reassessment of a bunch of those properties, whose taxes are going to go up anyway, and others, it's not going to go up, and we do a balanced budget. If we're already starting talking about adding a bunch to it, it's not going to sell. It's just, and I would, if I was sitting out there, I'd be highly peeved that, oh, they've reevaluated, now they're using harvest money for new things, and they put it off until this year, because they want harvest it now. That's the way I perceive it. I think you got a valid point, that's what I tried to say before. There's nothing here that anybody could argue with, it's not totally logical and needed. But how do you go forward with it?
Well, that's where I think it needs to be, like was mentioned, kind of phased in, like, I was just saying, where we start there, you look at salaries, you look at the first three items there at top of the line, but the rest need to start the planning process now, was the point of this, because if you're looking at waiting to even have the conversation for another year or two years or three years, you're kicking it down the road again, and you have to redo it with every new board, and have this new conversation with every new board if you don't have things in motion and in action. So saying let's wait isn't either feasible when it comes to conversation side. The conversation needs to be happening now, not in a year or two years or three years or whatever. You only have so many times, so many years with the board you currently have. So we have to move forward instead of kicking that can down the road if we want to see any action.
Government is slow.
And government was designed to be slow. Government was designed to be slow, so you can't screw people. But the conversations have to happen early.
One of the things that came to that meeting too was we were going to have this meeting more often. Yes, how many times we've had it?
How often would we like to have this meeting?
Tonight's the first one.
Because that is one thing I, we're doing, the school board, we're meeting quarterly. How often would you like to meet? Because that's been a key thing for me, is making sure that we're actually having these conversations at the table multiple times through a year. We can't just meet at budget time.
There's no way that we can, in my mind, we can have a plan to go to substations in this budget cycle. It was me taking the opportunity to say, we need to have.
In the future, let's plan ahead.
That's not what we're on with.
That's actually something that really would, that's a great thing that Cal could put in the newspaper, be, hey, look, in the long-term, here's what we're trying to move towards. If you publish that now, that would actually make it more powerful in the future when you start trying to do it.
And that's the goal with the conversation, yeah, getting that out there. So when it comes time, people are prepared for it.
Something that I skipped, when I skipped ahead to the Times, that peer review committee has government representatives right now, it's Mr. Tuttwiler. You all are welcome in that meeting, and also I extend an open invitation that any time that you want to come and look at the building, look at the staff, the trucks, or just sit down and have a conversation with me about EMS and what we do. I'm in my office, and more than going to sit down on a one-on-one basis and talk about it and understand it at whatever level we want to understand it at.
Last thing I'll say is I think you did what you guys did.
Good enough. Thank you all.
Appreciate what you did.